view.gov slash YouTube and Comcast Channel 26. As noted in the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period for the item by signing up at mountainview.gov slash CC underscore speakers or by phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and entering webinar ID nine four zero nine one seven eight seven nine one five. Any emails received by three thirty PM today were received directly by the city council. Emails received after three thirty PM will not be read during the meeting, but will be entered into the record for the meeting. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote. We'll move on to item two, which is the roll call with our interim city clerk Fonderlanden.
Thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lever.
Here.
Councilmember Madecak.
Here.
Councilmember Scholter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamay.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So all council members are present. We'll move on to item three point one, which is our multifamily residential zoning district update. We'll hear from advanced planning manager Martin Alkayer and assistant city manager, community development director, RT Shavastava. Martin will introduce the consultants who will also be available for questions. So we can have staff join us. Great. And for those who may be new to our council meetings, our study sessions, there was no formal action taken during a study session. All right, Mr. Alkayer, are you ready to take it away?
Yes, thank you. Let me just upload the presentation here. Okay, great. Good evening, I'm Martin Alkayer of Community Development Department. I'm presenting tonight along with RT Shavastava, our community development director. Also with us are Stefan Pellegrini and Tony Perez of Opticos, our consultants on the project. My presentation will focus on these three key things with a particular emphasis on the proposed approach and key questions, which is the second bullet point there. So the city council last saw this project in fall 2020, and on the screen are some of the big picture comments the council had at that time as the project was just getting off the ground. I won't read through all of them, but they were in the staff report. And just note that since this meeting, we've held two public workshops and an EPC meeting. The two public workshops that we held again in the fall of 2020, October and November, in general, there was support for some of the potential changes that we're talking about in the R3. However, there was some concern over the potential impacts, potential effect on adjacent neighborhood character proposed with with the amount of change that the draft R3 is looking at. So I'll just present kind of the overall big picture approach and then walk through some of the details within that proposed approach. And of course, we can always refer back to these slides as there's a fair amount of information in them. So on the screen, you see a map of the city with the R3 zoning district in orange. And basically, it is kind of a one size fits all zoning district, if you will, in the sense that the building heights, the building setbacks, and the building and open area coverage within the R3 are all the same, and they don't differentiate within within that large area. So after some analysis, the approach that we're proposing tonight is really to kind of break up that one size fits all development standard, again, focusing on the form and the massing as the initial kind of policy discussion, and break it up into four smaller subzones, R3A through R3D. So on the map, you see kind of the general locations of where those subzones might be located and in proximity to transit as well. And I'll provide some more details on this as we move forward. A big snapshot here is kind of showing at a glance the R3A through R3D subzones, showing the height maximums, showing the types of the housing types that we would envision in those areas, going from least intensive in R3A, stacked duplexes, cottage courts, moving all the way up the scale to R3D, the most intensive with kind of mid-rise stacked flats, if you will. So I was asked to present kind of an overview of the methodology that was used to create these subzones. Again, we've been iterating with the consultant team for several months now. So on the screen is kind of just a step-by-step approach to the methodology that was used to create the subzones and also to locate them within the city. So I'll just walk through these really, really quickly, and then, of course, the consultant team can speak to them in detail. But we started off with just evaluating the existing lot sizes, the building types, physical forming character within both R3 parcels and adjacent non-R3 parcels. Then we asked the question, can the lot sizes accommodate more intensive building types? Again, that question's being asked because of the council direction of the primary goal for the project that we wanted to study some more. If the answer was yes, then we looked at which building types would fit and be the most physically compatible with kind of the adjacent non-R3 parcels. If the lot size could not accommodate more intensive building types, then we were looking at changes to the standards or new standards to allow more housing than was currently allowed in the R3. So then, any changes to the standards, the new building types and lot size information all becomes the basis for these new subzones that we're presenting tonight. I'll just quickly walk through the different subzones at a glance. Again, each following the same format. Here's the R3A, the least intensive. You see a couple photographs there showing kind of the existing built environment within the R3A and a few neighborhoods. And then you see the map that shows the parcels in pink, where those R3As would be located, and again, the proximity to transit map. And then here are just some snapshot standards of the R3A zone, focusing again on the form and the, sorry, the building height and the building type. So here you see two and a half stories max, and you see the different building types that could be allowed, duplex stack, all the way to neighborhood townhouse, and a few other key standards. And then you see the graphic on the right, the example of intended physical character, which starts to give you a sense visually of how some of these standards might be organized on a lot and how they might present themselves to the street. And then it was also asked to present some pictures of some of these housing types. Some of the names of these housing types are not something we see all the time in Mountain View. So in the questions and responses that the council got to this item, there are these same images, but I'll just walk quickly through them. Here's some pictures of a duplex stack, again, envisioned for the R3A cottage court, what that might look like. Pocket neighborhood, probably most analogous to our small lot, single-family neighborhoods that you see in Mountain View. The fourplex building type. And then we move on to R3B. So again, the same kind of format, pictures of existing character, some potential locations of where those R3B subzones might be located, shown in the kind of darker purple. And then again, the same kind of key standards focusing on form and mass, three and a half stories max, bonus, the building types. And then again, you can start to see the massing as it's getting a little more intensive on that prototypical lot size. And then here's some other examples of some of these housing types that could be applicable both to R3A and R3B. See the neighborhood townhouse, some examples there. Here's some neighborhood courtyard developments, again, being built around a kind of a central organizing open space. And then we move on to R3C. Again, pictures of kind of existing character on Sierra Vista, there's one possible street. And then you see the locations of where those R3C parcels could be located. And again, we can refer back to these if council has more questions. And then again, the standards there. And then you can see the picture on the right. It's getting a lot more intensive in terms of building massing and coverage on a prototypical lot size. And then here's some additional examples of multiplex that could be applicable both not only to R3C but R3B. Some other R3C core townhouse prototypes. And then we move to the final area, R3D. Again, you see the areas in dark blue where they could possibly be located, could fit into the existing neighborhood there. And again, you see the pictures of the mid-rise stacked flats on Del Medio and in California Street. Again, here's the final kind of rough standards, showing the six stories max, the building types again. And then you can see the graphic where it's really filling out that lot, prototypical lot size in terms of the stacked units. And then a few more examples of these building types for R3C and R3D, the core courtyard, and the mid-rise examples. So this was brought to the EPC, and we asked the same questions that are in your staff report tonight. I'm not going to read through all of these, but in general, the EPC thought this was off to a good start. They did request some more information and analysis, which we'll talk about in our next steps. They'd like the variety of housing types presented in this approach, and so they were supportive of that. But they did have concerns about the potential pace of change in terms of how much new development this would this would kind of result in, particularly how aggressive new standards might be in terms of turning these properties into higher density projects. And then they had several other comments on the different subzones, R3A through R3D. Again, I won't read through them, but we can refer back to them, they're also in your staff report. And the final kind of question we have for council tonight is regarding the overlay zones within R3. So the R3 has two overlay zones, which is basically an additional layer of restrictive zoning controls on properties. There's two in R3, one for height and one for special design. The height are shown in blue on the map, and basically those overlays limit new development to either one story or two stories. You're not allowed to build a three-story in these areas. And this was probably in place due to concerns over potential impacts to surrounding lower intensity neighborhoods at the time these were adopted. These were older kind of legacy overlay zones, if you will, and we're still doing some research on when they were enacted and the intent there. But essentially, for the height overlay zones, our draft approach is to maybe maintain those existing height limits, one or two story, but then supplement them with the new R3 standards. So in other words, you would, new development in these areas shown in blue couldn't exceed either the one or two story height limit, but they could potentially take advantage of some of these newer housing types or setbacks, et cetera, with the new R3 standards. And then the last overlay, the special design, shown in red, these were placed on properties near either freeways, a Caltrain corridor, or close to industrial uses. And the concern was how the potential adjacent uses in terms of noise, traffic, air pollution would affect development or future residential uses in these red areas. We don't see too many permits coming for this, but we were thinking that, again, being a legacy overlay zone district, that perhaps we could just replace this special design overlay with the new R3 standards, knowing that there's advances in, you know, building design, soundproof windows, HVAC systems, et cetera, that could hopefully mitigate some of those impacts from those surrounding uses. So in terms of next steps, again, we are looking at a study session for replacement requirements. Again, the issue of replacement has come up throughout this project, both concern from the public as well as our internal working group. We've been working through this and closely coordinating on it. So any changes to the R3 will be coming forward with some policies regarding replacements, replacement requirements. So we are expecting the housing division to have that study session in the fall, and then hopefully be moving forward with an additional round of study sessions for both EPC and city council, potentially in the fall, because we've heard a need for more information, more analysis, and we're in the process of doing that. And then, of course, you see the last two steps there in terms of 2022, when we expect the final documents to come forward. So that concludes staff's presentation. Again, the two questions we have, and of course, staff and the consultant team are available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Perhaps we can stop sharing the screen so we can get to council questions, if that would be possible. Thanks so much. So do council members have questions? Councilmember Abi Koga.
Is this the, if it's the study session, I think we usually go to public comment first.
Okay, great, thanks. Sorry about that. So at this time, we can move on to public comment. As noted on the agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments at this portion by raising their hand in Zoom or dialing six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. All right. So Sacred Fonderlanden, do you mind pulling up the timer? We do. Why don't we give folks three minutes? Let me know when the timer's ready.
It is ready.
Okay, great. Jeff Gilman?
Hi, thank you. My name's Jeff Gilman. I'm with the Tan Group, and we own the Americana Apartments located at 707 Continental Circle. I missed the opportunity to comment earlier in this process. High level, we're generally in favor of higher densities and heights, even more than are proposed in the staff memo, so that more high-density housing can be provided to help the jobs housing imbalance in Mountain View. But specifically, I did want to note that our property, the existing 16-acre Americana complex, has been identified in the staff memo as an R3C site on page eight and elsewhere in the memo. But I wanted to note, we already have a formal application into the city. The file number is PL 202127. We're proposing to add 254 units on a portion of the, in the existing 544-unit site. We aren't removing any existing units. And in July of last year, we submitted the state's SB 330 streamlined application. So any changes here wouldn't apply to our proposed project that we're working through staff with. However, I did want to say that for the balance of our property outside the scope of work of this new proposed project, we would actually request that an R3D designation be applied to the Americana site, because if we do any future redevelopment, an R3C designation is actually effectively a downzone. Those densities are less dense than even the multifamily project we have onsite of buildings that were built 50 years ago. So thank you for your consideration. That's it.
Great, thank you. Robert Cox?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Kamay, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and other council members. I'm Robert Cox, speaking on behalf of the Steering Committee of Livable Mountain View. We have already sent you a letter on our position, so I won't repeat all of it here. While we support the concept of an R3 zoning updating principle, we do have serious issues with some of the specifics in the staff proposal. We recommend that the R3A, R3B, and R3C categories be adopted as guidelines rather than grants of upzoning by right. This would allow the council to determine on a case-by-case basis the merits of an upzoning proposal and help with the timing. Replace the R3D category by a precise plan review. The public should participate in proposals that will result in six- to eight-story buildings near their property. Three, a staff report be prepared, including options to the council, on how to meet the RENA obligations in the next cycle. This will help everyone envision how the R3 zoning update could contribute to these goals. And four, take more seriously transitions to existing neighborhoods, including rare setbacks, parking impacts, and the loss of community green space. Thank you for the consideration of our views. I yield my time.
Great, thank you. Ellis Burns?
Thank you, this is appreciated. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commandant City Council Members, Ellis Burns, real estate consultant. I've been asked by Mr. Greg Zahn, owner of 918 Richmond, Rich Avenue, to provide comments on the proposed R3 development standards being reviewed by you this evening. Mrs. Zahn has owned the property at 918 Rich Avenue for the past 12 years. It's currently vacant, undeveloped, it's three quarters of an acre, flag lot. Mr. Zahn applauds the efforts of the city to update these standards. He knows firsthand how restrictive the current R3 standards are. Since 2010, he has attempted a couple of times to redevelop the property, but due to the restrictions, the R3 zoning, he's determined it was not financially feasible and decided not to proceed. However, Mr. Zahn is now proposing a project on a site using state density bonus law. This could yield up to 29 for sale units, four of which will be BMR units. To develop the project at the proposed density, the development application utilizes the density bonus concessions, waivers, parking, waivers provided by state density bonus law in exchange for the provision of affordable units. Absent the application of state density bonus law, the property would build approximately 11 fewer units. This proposed project hopefully illustrates why updating the zoning could be significant given the city's goal of creating more housing in the community. Mr. Zahn supports many of the suggestions being proposed by staff and endorsed by the EPC, including the subareas, form-based zoning that can address context, height setbacks, and parking within the various neighborhoods. Also, please consider as this R3 zoning moves forward, there is some flexibility to allow exceptions for irregularly shaped lots such as flag lots. In conclusion, the proposed modification to the R3 zoning could result in reducing the number of requests for waivers and concessions, concessions, provide the neighborhood and developers with a better idea of what to expect in terms of type of development in these proposed subareas, and will likely result in increasing the number and diversity of diversity of housing in the community, a significant goal for the city of Mountain View. I should also note that this particular 918 Rich Avenue is located in subarea R3, in the proposed subarea R3-C. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Tim McKenzie?
Hi, greetings, councilors. I'd just like to say, upzoning sounds great. We need more housing. I'm all for it. I'd love to see more housing in the neighborhood. I just have two comments. One, about the timeline, it looks like around 2022 is the earliest that this will, this will get passed through. Someone else earlier mentioned SB 330, which is a great state bill that helps prevent displacement, gives people in affordable units have the ability to come back, write a first refusal, and have to be offered, I was thinking, at rates affordable to them. So I, that sounds great, but SB 330 expires in 2025. So I think any upzoning measures, we should enact local ordinances that go at least as far as SB 330, but I'd say as far as we possibly can go while still remaining consistent with state law. So I, I think we have to keep and keep displacement from occurring as we build the housing that we so desperately need. And yeah, and for building affordable housing, we also have to think about making sure that the affordable, the housing is actually affordable to the people who live in it. I think affordable housing comes for like 80% of area median income or something like that is the official level where affordable housing begins, but 80% of the median income in our area is still a lot of money comparatively for working-class people and not, not many people. There's a lot of low-wage workers who don't make that much money. So affordable units should start at the deepest levels of affordability so that we can have an economically diverse community, and people can actually afford to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Philip Cosby with the Council of City of St. Anthony's. We greatly applaud developing more housing here in Mountain View, but we're a little alarmed that we're having this discussion of increasing these densities in multifamily housing areas without first talking about what's going to happen to the people that presently live there. And so as, as Tim was mentioning, we strongly recommend that you consider displacement options similar to SB 330 before you actually enact any changes in the R3 zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yuju Park?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Yuju Park, and I'm in Silicon Valley at home. Thank you to the staff and Opticos for all their work on the draft R3 zoning code update. We're really excited to see that the city's considering updating the R3 code to provide for a lot more multifamily housing while providing for a greater variety of different types while also protecting residents against displacement. We wanted to provide a few comments and recommendations on the R3 zoning update for council to consider. The first being that we think that some of the R3 subzones near transit could actually support more density, and we think this could be done either through a transit-oriented development overlay or by changing the subzones designation to more R3C and R3D. We think that this is really important to create more sustainable development with reduced parking, increased transit ridership, especially during COVID right now with reduced ridership and decreased greenhouse gas emissions. And we actually have two areas we'd like to specifically point out that we think could hold more capacity, one being the Quinavaca area east of I-85 on the Sunnyvale border, and that's also close to one of the BRT stops, and the Del Medio area that's near the San Antonio Transit Center and Caltrain stop. And that area is also next to the San Antonio Precise Plan area where seven stories is already allowed, so there'd be less concerns about neighborhood transitions. And we'd also like council to consider the possibility of parcel aggregation in R3A subzones to offer the potential of higher density and/or 100% affordable development in the future. And also think that clarification on this, on how the state density bonus aligns with form-based zoning would be helpful. And last but not least, we're really pleased that this R3 update is being done in parallel with the new displacement policy and support the coordination with the housing department. But we are very concerned about the displacement issue since SB 330 does have a sunset date. So we're hoping to see some type of guarantee that the R3 zoning update will go in tandem with the new replacement policy as well. Thank you so much for your time, and we're excited to see how this progresses.
Thank you. Silja Paymer?
Hi, my name's Silja Paymer. I am a member of Green Spaces Mountain View, and I agree with many of the things that have already been said, so I want to kind of identify something I haven't heard yet, which is it would be really nice to see language on walkability in the increased density. So what I see in visiting friends in Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and San Jose in these large developments, especially those courtyard-based developments, there are often many locked gates, which result in them being like large swaths where no one can get through unless they're a resident. And so I would like to see some language on that these developments need to increase walkability. If they choose to have locked gates, then they should have a right-of-way access for pedestrians, as many of these developments will be between two streets, and so could act as a large block to walkability in these neighborhoods if they don't allow pass-through. We are also large proponents of making sure there's language that supports increased green spaces and biodiversity with these developments as well, but my passion is walkability and being able to access all of Mountain View. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go.
Hey, okay. All right. I won't delay. Don't defend disparity. Deny dull discriminatory diminutive domiciles. Don't delay dwelling density diversification. We need to address historic inequity and exclusion created by low-density zoning practices. A, B, C are easy, but we really need the D. The biggest environmental cost of a development is in its inception. Instead of using fear of progress to create a downward pressure, let's take a let's take a forward-looking approach. Build better now, build more as we redevelop other zones. Using the existing low density to force projects to provide strictly less housing units than they could justify perpetuates existing injustice. We've sprawled out, now we need to infill and build up. I'm much more concerned with how boring the developments have been than I am with their height. The images in staff's presentation look so much more interesting than most of the recent projects, not that they've set very high bar. And as for displacement, I agree with Tim and several other speakers. We need to codify SB 330 locally to make sure that redevelopment doesn't harm the most vulnerable and so that we can maintain or expand our stock of affordable housing. I have a good pithy way to say that, but maybe I'll figure one out by the time that study session comes up. Thanks.
Thank you. David Watson?
Hi, I'm David Watson. I'm a member of MNDY. I'd like to start by thanking the city for hiring Opticus to analyze feasibility of multifamily development in Mountain View, and I really like the city's form-based approach. Infill multifamily housing is necessary to achieve our missing middle and greenhouse gas emission goals. I wanted to highlight three items. These are also in our letter, but they're, I think, particularly important things, which are, one, we're hoping for a transit-oriented overlay to allow for a reduced parking requirement within some distance of public transit along with the new R3 specifications. We also think that the city, sort of, for the purpose of walkability, the fastest way to get really good protection for pedestrians is architectural arcades, which we are really excited about as a way to sort of make a great pedestrian experience. They protect pedestrians from both the elements and also give a sense of protection from traffic. And finally, to achieve true form-based zoning, the city shouldn't have any limit on the total number of units in any of the newly proposed R3 designations. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Nazanin Daschall?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, the person who spoke, the lady who spoke before, Alexander Brown, I just would like to reiterate the diversity of architecture, walking space. If we can achieve this with every new development in mind that's welcoming and add some sort of tree canopy, maintaining some level of walkability through neighborhoods. You know, one example is Park Place, which I think is just a fabulous place to walk through, even if you don't live there. So, I would like to reiterate that. And also, reiterate that, you know, housing is not just individual housing or two-person housing, it's family housing. So, with all these big projects coming up, it's important to have in mind that families also need to live in denser housing and to make, you know, allow for that as well, space for that as well. That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, that was our last speaker. So, if we could bring it back to council for, let's do questions and then we can go into recommendations. Council members have questions? Councilmember Madacek?
Thanks, I just have a few questions. There's a summary of the workshops in the staff report, and I was pretty surprised at the number of attendees. It's a lot more than we usually have. And so, I was wondering if staff could comment on who the attendees were? Were they residents? Were they property owners, developers, housing advocates? I'm kind of interested in what was kind of the makeup of the groups.
Sure, our focus was on residents and property owners. We sent over 30,000 postcards to folks within the R3 and within a certain buffer to the R3. So, that was the bulk of the folks who attended. We also did get folks from specific organizations, EMB Coalition for Sustainable Planning, that type of thing.
Okay. And on page two of the staff report, and it was also partially in your presentation, there was a list of like comments from the council. And I just want to clarify, that was just a list as opposed to like what the majority of the council members said? That was just like a laundry list of comments. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. And on page seven, in figure one, there's quite a few different housing types listed there. And I was wondering, it seems like there's very few that are typically ownership, like neighborhood townhouses, core townhouses. But are any of the other ones often ownership types?
You know, it really depends on how those properties or projects are mapped. That is, if they come forward with a map to provide ownership housing, a condominium development, et cetera. So, townhouses and row houses, those types of things, those can be ownership, but also mid-rise, you know, stacked flats can technically be condominium ownership units as well.
Okay. So, kind of one in each category or zoning district. Okay. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Thank you. So, I have a sort of a laundry list of short questions. So, one is, and some of them may be for staff and some for the consultant. Is the consultant here? I'll ask them anyway.
We'll make sure to bring the consultant over, or they can raise their hand and I will present them to a panelist. There we go.
Okay, great. So, several of my questions are about how to get variety. So, I love seeing all the building types and thank you for presenting the actual photos. And I just wonder, I guess this is mostly for the consultant. We've sometimes, and several of the people doing public comment have said, we tend to get a lot of the same buildings stamped out over and over again. And I'm hoping that when we do this form-based zoning, that it's a way to get beyond that. And I like the housing types that you've shown, but I'm wondering how you've seen in other places you work, do developers tend to latch on to one that's kind of the preferred type and stamp it out over and over again? Or is there anything we can do to prevent that? Because, I should say, in terms of what several other members of the public brought up, walkability, I see, and what other people sometimes bring up, vibrancy in denser neighborhoods. To stamp out the same type over and over again really kind of makes things less vibrant and makes people want to take shorter walks. So, do you have a way of addressing that? Making sure that people develop different housing types?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hicks for the question. Yeah, there are a number of ways to address that. One way is that we, there are a combination of building types and what we call frontage types. And the frontage types are elements such as doryards, porches. As one of the speakers just said, the arcade or another version of that is a gallery, what that speaker was talking about. So, those are all elements that can be attached to the front elevations of buildings and to the sides of buildings as well to change how they relate to the pedestrian and to relate to the pedestrian in the first place. So, that in and of itself right there can change a building that otherwise would be the same to look different by varying the frontage type. The other thing that you can do is to, and this can get a little complex, but it's certainly an approach, is to regulate the number of choices for building types based on particular areas. So, you might say, within this zone, on these particular streets, we're concerned about this type maybe being overused, so we're going to broaden the list or we're going to regulate the number of times that can appear on one block. That can get a little tricky. But for larger sites, it's a lot easier because there you can regulate the number of building types being used on a brand-new block. But in an infill situation, it isn't usually a problem, but we do have ways to deal with it, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear you do and, yeah, interesting to me. Another type of variety is type of unit in terms of size. How do you make sure that there are some family-sized units available? That you don't get all units for single people?
I'm sorry, and before you answer, do you mind introducing yourself for our virtual audience?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, Tony Perez of Opticus Design. Yes, so there are two of us here from Opticus Design. Stefan Pellegrini, the principal in charge on this project, and the project manager, Tony Perez. I'll take a first pass at that question, Councilmember Hicks, and then I'll ask my colleague Stefan Pellegrini to take a second pass at that. You know, some cities actually regulate minimum unit size or maximum unit size, and that has its benefits and issues. Other cities have used the idea of allowing an increase in intensity to correspond to unit size. So, as the intensity that you can actually achieve on a parcel goes up, it corresponds to the size of the unit, either going up or going down, depending on the city's objectives. But I think that probably the city that has the most experience with that is the city of Santa Barbara in Southern California. They call it average unit size density. And so, I just will say that on the many codes that I've worked on, the market usually deals with that kind of situation, but in certain communities that that issue is regulated. And I'll just turn it over to Stefan.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Stefan Pellegrini, Principal with Opticus Design. Just to add to Tony's, excuse me, comment on that, you know, there's sort of a couple of situations where we see larger family units start to occur. One is, you know, in situations where you can bring certain kinds of multifamily projects to market where it makes sense to build larger units. And it could be products that actually trend toward condominium projects as opposed to for rent projects. But in sort of hypermarkets like we often experience in the Bay Area, regulations can actually help to maintain the delivery of those kinds of units. And another example that I think is used in places like the city of San Francisco is just establishing a minimum requirement for a certain number of family minutes per building, which, you know, essentially sort of sets aside, you know, a certain number of two or three bedrooms that could emerge in a larger multifamily building.
So, thank you. My next question is, when I looked at R3D, the pictures, the sketches that you had, the sidewalks didn't have trees in them or not very many, and there wasn't a planting strip. And to me, that didn't seem necessary, like it seemed like you could easily fit trees. And this is, you know, some of the members of the public talked about that being important to them by diversity and landscaping and walkability. And I would agree with those members of the public. And I just wanted to confirm that that picture was not, you know, what we needed to do, that we can actually put in planting strips and a little more greenery than I see in those R3D pictures? And I guess attached to that is a question about how much do you do streetscape standards along with this?
Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember Hicks. A great question. And we've received a lot of input at the APC and previous to that and other workshops about that part of streetscapes. And so, first, you know, that diagram that you see associated with the R3D, you know, that's one way that our R3D could be delivered. And we chose the most intense version of that to be shown. And so, it's, you know, it's a long way to say that around the corner from that, there could very well be a portion with a big lawn next to the curb, a tree lawn or a planter with a tree in it, and then a sidewalk in the front yard of buildings. Or all of the R3D could function that way as a more green sidewalk and parkway or whatever, however you use or you call it. So, unfortunately, we just use the most urban version of that and that's what you're seeing there. Secondly, that area of the streetscape is something that we are going to include in the standards here, and it's called the public frontage standard. So, it's everything from the property line in front of a property out to the curb of the sidewalk into the street. So, that whole area can be detailed very differently across the city to deliver different kinds of environments. And so, what you're asking about falls right into that.
Okay. And then my last question, I should start out by saying, I'm actually a big fan of Opticus and I'm glad staff hired them and I knew about them before that was the case. And I know you have a new book out, and when I thumb through it, I see that you've done a little work with community land trusts. And I'm wondering whether you might have any comments on using those in places like this as a third option? Because we've had questions about, you know, is there enough ownership? I know people, particularly low-income people in the city, totally don't want to be stuck renting forever. And I'm wondering, particularly in places where there's no inclusionary housing, where it's standalone affordable housing, whether you've used that, what your experience is?
I can respond to that. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Hicks. You know, there are sort of a handful of community land trusts that are fairly large that are functioning in the San Francisco Bay Area. And I think there is sort of an overlap with missing middle and sort of upper-missing-middle skilled housing and CLTs. We personally don't have a lot of experience with implementing those or being in situations where those have been driven by a municipality as opposed to sort of emerging from a nonprofit or, you know, a third party. But I would be happy to make some inquiries and get back to you to provide some additional information on that topic.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cheryl Walter?
Hi. Now, I have several questions. I really want to make sure that I understand the purpose of the R3 development. You know, and so, some of my questions are related to that. And I know you talked about it some in the staff report, but I'm hoping you can go into it a little further. One is, what kind of R3 development have we recently seen in the non-precise plan areas? That...
Sure. Just to respond to your first question, you know, the purpose, really the goal stemming from the council direction was to update the R3 standards with an eye towards incentivizing stacked flats. That was kind of the primary driver of this whole project. And then to your second point about recent development in R3, there really has not been any recent stacked flat there really has not been any recent stacked flat development in the R3 zoning district whatsoever. Most of the development we've seen the last fifteen, twenty years in the R3 have been either rowhouse, most recently, or small off, single-family. Most of the newer stacked flat apartments that you see in the city are in actually precise plan areas, the El Camino Precise Plan, I'd say, as well as the San Antonio Precise Plan.
And also, in in some of those cases where we've seen rowhouse developments, the rowhouses have been a a smaller number of units than the apartments they replaced, right? So?
Yes, in in several cases, that is correct.
So so the, you know, the displacement is is really, you know, a huge issue. Okay, or replacement issue. Okay, well, well, you did talk a little bit about how the the policy development process is for the replacement and the and and this R3 overlap, but it was it was kind of general. So so is there, I mean, are you expecting to have a study session where we go over both at the same time? Because I I really find that these two issues are, don't don't separate well. We we really, I mean, displacement has been a a severe problem in our community for, you know, for many years. It led to the development of rent control. And 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 now that we're, you know, we're moving forward, and and we look at our redevelopment, we see that that we're kind of developing, when we redevelop some of these places that need to be redeveloped, that there there are fewer units. So we don't want that to go on anymore. So I I I but 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 we can't do the 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 R3 without looking at the 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 replacement. So how are they going to intersect? I mean, are we going to have joint study sessions, or will they be very close in time? And also, what about the inclusion of the SB 330 protections? Are we assuming that they will be included in our replacement suggestions?
Councilmember Cheryl Walter, I could I could take that question. I think you bring up some really key issues that we're thinking about. The the next study session that council will be seeing is the one on replacement requirements. And that will be focused entirely on on the replacement and displacement issue. And based on that, we might find that it would be possible to enact an ordinance with requirements similar to, for example, the BMR. If the council wants to provide incentives or quote-unquote a bonus for projects that increase replacement, that's an example of where it could intersect with the R3, as we've done in precise plans. So there'll be parts of it that will intersect with R3, and there'll be parts of it that won't, but will apply to all projects. And so the first study session will outline the various options. And then depending on which options the council wants us to look at, we will come back with a study session on the R3 that not only goes into more details with the standards, but also on how, on the parts that intersect with the R3, for example, the bonus or waivers, or however else we want to tailor it. Then the displacement response will come back with its own ordinance amendments that don't connect with R3, if there are any, and then the R3 will have its piece. So we have examples of this, for example, in in the precise plans. We have a bonus for certain projects that do certain things, and you could theoretically build that into the R3. Examples of where we've addressed issues that are outside of the specific zone is in our BMR requirements or our tenant relocation requirements. And so there might be areas that might get amended based on that, that are not connected to R3. So it's, once we get your comments, it's up to us to sort out which ones belong where, and then bring those within those specific areas.
So today, so today, we're talking about the actual sort of built part.
That's right.
Physical part, and we'll be talking more about the rules that we want to protect our community with at another time.
That's right.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, I just think that we all feel like, and 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 you know, that those those rules and that protection are are really, really important. And we can't completely separate them. I also wondered about aggregating aggregating parcels. You know, you can, you have a lot more flexibility in doing to do dense projects well on larger parcels. So I wondered what we're including here to to incentivize people to aggregate parcels. Is that is that part of this program, and can we make it part of the program?
The short answer is is yes, because aggregating parcels gives you more development options. But maybe maybe Tony can help to see, provide a a little bit more detail on this.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Cheryl Walter, for the question. Yeah, typically, we address parcel assembly as an option in in zoning districts so that people can assemble properties and put a bigger building on it. And and so the zoning districts reflect that. But we we really work hard to avoid that being the requirement, that you can't do anything unless you assemble. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that that one of the things we want to support as much as possible is flexibility, so that we can have the right architectural varieties we want, and and we can support, you know, denser development. Okay. And then my other question is, how does how does the state density bonus impact each sub-subzone?
I I can provide a little bit of information that this, the the team is thinking about this. And part of our our next analysis is to sort of look at what base zoning should look like so that the state density bonus would be developed on that base versus what a bonus would look like if the council's interested in giving a bonus for projects that do more things, for example, replacement or or other issues. And so I think, I think we have examples of precise plans where that has been done, where we have a clear flow chart that says, you get your density bonus that's given by the state on the base, and then if you do these other things, the city will give you a bonus, so you can choose one of these two paths. So that's one way we can treat it. Obviously, we have to do some more research, but a lot of it will depend on the council's determination of what they want to include for replacement requirements, to what extent we want to make it economically an incentive. Or not, it could just be a requirement. So I think we still need some things to work out, but we're very cognizant that we need a base on which state density bonus needs to be built, and that ideally, we would create a bonus only for city incentives that's separate, and and developers would have to choose one or the other.
So the forms that we're seeing on in the staff report are the bonus would, the, you know, there's a bonus listed in that. So what bonus is that?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. Originally, we had started looking at what would a bonus look like if there was a thirty-five percent bonus? Right? Just, we took the state, for example, right, to say, hey, you know, this would is is what it would look like. But the state bonus has now increased to fifty percent. You know, we don't know where state law is going to go. And so it's clear that we have to rethink what our base needs to be and what our bonus needs to be. There's a lot of assumptions in the bonus. The bonus goes up to, I think, you you looked at the criteria we used to develop. And so what we can definitely tell you is that the bonus heights can't go above what we have in the in the study, because they become economically infeasible for construction and other other issues. So what we're showing you with the bonus is the outer boundary of what can be built. You could certainly go lower, you know, and some of those will be economically feasible, some of those won't. So we we still have to do a fair amount of iteration, is what I what I meant to say. And we we will do that once we hear from you about the about the replacement requirements. And what what we bring back to you is going to be dependent upon what we hear at that future study session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abigail.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So I, if I recall, I think it was mentioned, the purpose of engaging in this process, I believe, was to try to address the missing middle by encouraging the development of stacked flats, which in my mind are ownership units, condominium-type ownership units. But in listening to the public comment, we had one property owner who wants to expand his apartment development. So that's sort of, in, you know, my mind, I I feel like with our precise plans, with North Bay Shore and East Wisman, we're going to be seeing primarily apartment, rent rentals. And so what is it, what's special about this? Where we're going to be able to incentivize ownership stacked flats is my first question.
Councilmember, I I think we've scratched our heads quite a bit about this. And I think we'll have to take that comment back and research it, because I don't know if if we can require buildings to be ownership, have ownership units. We have some limitations in what the city can require. I think we were trying to look at it the a different way, which is to say, what does it take to build an economically feasible stacked flat condo project? And do our standards, you know, help us achieve that? So that's essentially how we've been looking at it. But you do bring up a good question that we might have to research and see to what extent we can move people towards condos. I should add that sort of building types will lend themselves to ownership. The ones you see in the R3A, R3B are likely going to be ownership-type units, because they're more of the townhouse, rowhouse style.
Okay, yes, yeah, so, you know, I guess I might be going into comments, but that that was my understanding, and that was what I was interested in. But if it's, you know, to get more apartments, to frankly, like, that's all we've been seeing, right? Pretty much the last several years, so I'm not interested in incentivizing more apartments, to be frank, and especially if they're luxury apartments. So, yes, I'd like to, hopefully, we can get into that more, more in detail in the next round. And so then, in in light of that, I guess as, you know, we've had the developments, proposals come forward, I I noticed that, like, the townhome rowhomes tend to be on smaller parcels. And I guess that's what I'm getting to, is looking at the map on, I think it's page eight of the staff report. My 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 concern is, and, you know, I think, my my thought originally with this was being to have some, you know, minor tweaks and changes that could incentivize stacked flats. But when we look at areas like, I think this is kind of the Rex Manor, along Rangestorff, so I think it's into the Rex Manor, or maybe Colony areas, where it's all dark purple. That's like a quite a large swath of geography. And I I guess my concern with that is, where, how do we incorporate, and I know we've talked about this in the briefing, but how do we incorporate the amenities? Councilmember Hicks mentioned sidewalks, but what about the parks? We're having all this huge debate about parks right now, you know, traffic concerns. And so then that that leads me to, I think, what EPC mentioned, is like, in these larger areas, shouldn't we be maybe looking at precise planning rather than allowing for all of this, you know, to just be color-zoned, a new color? Because at the end of the day, you know, it can't just be about how many units. We really, this is our debate we have are having, but we need to have amenities to support that. So how do we incorporate this if we're going to move towards this kind of upzoning rather than a general plan update and precise planning?
I'll try to tackle this, having been involved in some previous precise plan discussions. I think the benefit of having a precise plan is when an area is, has some very special character, North Bay Shore is a perfect example of that. You know, you've got ecological issues, you've got other issues, and you're trying to target certain certain things that you can't target with regular zoning. The other thing that we've done with precise plans is try to move more towards a form-based code. We're not quite there with all of them, but we have started moving more towards that, and and we've developed street scape standards in them. This particular update actually incorporates a lot of these elements. And so I don't feel like a precise plan in each of these areas is going to add or enhance anything more. In terms of, I think, your issue about location of parks and things, that's something we're going to have to go back and research, because just given the partialization and the ownership issues, I think the only incentive that you have to create parks is if you're able to significantly upzone, and you have one or two property owners that own the majority of these areas, which is not the case here. So I think the city is going to have to work on some options in terms of how do we provide those parks and open space. So even converting this area to a precise plan wouldn't give us any additional tools that we don't already have, but certainly something for us to look at, because I I we do agree, and I think this team is focused on, looking at how do we incorporate those street scape issues? How do we look at the adjacencies? And we're very much focused on that. When you are adjacent to a single family, we can create form-based zoning that specifically looks at the forms adjacent to those. So I think I think even the zoning update can achieve the same goals. But the only issue I think we have to tackle is the parks. That one isn't an easy one, whether it's a precise plan or not. But we will take that back and research it.
So along those lines, you know, I've been thinking about whether, and I think it was EPC that brought this, or maybe it was Mr. Cox brought it up, but, you know, rather than this becoming just upzoning by right, should these just be guidelines? And and I was also looking at maybe sizes, and for the smaller parcels, perhaps they could be by right. But when you start to get to the larger, you know, blocks and neighborhoods, that's where maybe it becomes guidelines, because we have to think about things like parks and whatnot. But do you have any thoughts about that, like basing it on size?
Yeah, you know, we were thinking about some of these comments that have been brought up earlier. I haven't had a chance to go back and connect with the team. But the one thing I can't say is they have to be standards, and we can do a base or a bonus. But guidelines don't have much meaning in state law today. So whatever standards we develop are the ones we have and the ones we can enforce, right? So we can create a base, and we can create a bonus for projects that provide, I don't know, parks, open space, you can name what they are. But they have to be objective, they have to be clear, and there has to be a clear path. Otherwise, they can't, they can't really be implemented. So I think what we have to find is, look at all the criteria the council wants to include in these additional bonus projects, and take a look at what the base needs to be and what the bonus needs to be, so so we can build exactly what you are talking about, which is allow a certain amount of development, but encourage and incentivize the addition with with some of the amenities. But again, I think we have to do a lot more research to figure out, but these comments do help us so that we can, we can go back and do that research.
So a process question, then, if we were to move forward with these color zones, are these basically the guy, the standards that developers can rezone to? And would they still have to go through the process of rezoning? Or are we talking about just automatically upzoning these areas to these colors?
The intent is to actually automatically upzone. So we have to be very careful about, like we said, what the base is and what people get as amenities. So we have to be very careful about, like we said, what the base is and what people get as a minimum. Because that's something that state law would allow. And then what those additional amenities are that, that you would want in order to get the bonus. And those also have to be very objectively stated so that it's very clear. So the idea is not for them to go and apply for a rezoning.
Okay, I guess that's where my concern is, is like, what is the return to the community then? But, you know, we see the benefit for upzoning to the developers, but the community, you know, I've always said this. What does the community get in return? And I don't see that yet. The other concern I have is, you know, when I look at like the RENA numbers and we have exceeded our overall numbers, but we're always short on the affordable housing numbers. And, you know, based on our inclusionary zoning at 15%, we're never gonna reach that, what we're supposed to be if you wanna follow RENA. So, you know, my conclusion is that has to come from basically the city working in partnership with affordable housing developers to build all affordable projects. But if we upzone this, aren't we gonna be basically increasing, appreciating the value of land, making it more difficult for affordable housing developers to purchase land to build all affordable units? And how do we address that?
Yeah, I think the short answer is, is yes. But one, one issue that we've been trying to solve for, for a fair amount of time is that, just given the economics of land and rowhomes seem to be almost the only economically feasible option on R3 parcels today. That has been stalled a little bit because of SB 330's replacement requirements. But once those are sunset, we're gonna go back to rowhomes. So if the council is interested in seeing those stacked flat types, we at least need to look at that. And you, we can figure out what density the council is interested in, in, in doing. But you're right, you know, other than that, I think we have to look at a series of incentives in order to build a base and a bonus so that the city gets some amenities along with whatever the developer gets. But we are trying to solve for that stacked flat issue because the current standards just don't allow those to be built.
I guess I still don't see where that's being incentivized because we may just end up getting more apartments is my sense. And then my final question, I'm sorry to go long, but it's again a process, more a process question. But I guess I'm a little concerned, well, not, not little. I am concerned because I look at this and, you know, when we did the general plan update, it was very community. We received a lot of community involvement and input. And, you know, I really looked at it as the community saying these were the areas where we can have change and redevelopment and upzoning. But these areas that we're looking at now are essentially outside of those change areas. And so I guess I just have a real concern about community buy-in. I know you did the focus groups and got 100 people, but when we did the general plan update, we had 200, 300 people at these, each of the meetings. So I, yes, I guess I'm really concerned about process and how we're gonna be rolling this out to the community to get real, you know, to make sure we've done extensive community input process so that we get buy-in again from the community. So thoughts on that?
I, I think this team is continually looking at ways to do better outreach and will continue that. And you're right, this is gonna result in some general plan amendments in some areas. And we've been, we've been pretty transparent and we'll be pretty transparent about those as we communicate with the community. But I think, I think taking another look at our community outreach plan and making sure that we are building in that input, I think this time around, we have the benefit of being able to also look at displacement response and replacement requirements that we didn't with the last general plan because that was more focused on land use. We're hoping really to bring those two elements together and reach a larger part of the community than we, we have. So there is more work to be done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm ready to go into comments if there are no other questions, but I just saw Councilmember Lieber raise her hand, so I'm happy to defer to her. She's got questions.
Great. So I'll go to Councilmember Lieber and then we can go, once we're done with questions, we can go into questions one and two. And then I ask that each council member, just let it, just provide your answers for one and two at one time. Okay, great. Councilmember Lieber?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have already talked to the staff a little bit about this, but I, I just wanted to confirm our understanding so that the public can hear it. So looking at the displacement and potentially codifying SB 330 locally to preserve multiple layers of affordability, we would have a chance to take action on that before looking at the overall issues of, of R3. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, I think the next time we come back to the council, it will be specifically on those displacement response. Along with all the options, including, like you said, the SB 330 style, there's a spectrum of ideas. The idea that the team has is to make sure that we're able to put displacement response ordinance amendments in place that don't belong in the R3 prior to adopting the R3. And when the R3 is adopted, it will be adopted along with the other piece that might have any connection to displacement response. So we're structuring these in such a way that, that the folks who are in apartments now will continue to be protected in the manner that the council wishes them to be.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we will turn now to the, the two questions that staff have for us. Vice Mayor Ramirez, you wanna kick things off with question one and two, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to try and make a persuasive case to proceed with the staff recommendation or something substantially close to it. And I'm going to reference some materials that staff kindly gave to me over a year ago when we were, I think, more actively trying to address the immediate challenge of development pressure within R3 zoned parcels. Staff gave me a spreadsheet with a long list of projects where there was a displacement impact. And a lot of these addresses might be familiar and a lot of them may not be. But we have, for instance, 1958 Rock Street, 2005 Rock Street, 2310 Rock Street, all zoned R3 where rent-controlled, naturally affordable apartments were demolished and replaced with sometimes fewer rowhomes. 2025, 2020, sorry, 2065 San Luis, 208, 210 Sierra Vista, 535, 555 Walker, 1950 Montecito, again, all zoned R3, rent-controlled, generated naturally affordable apartments replaced with rowhomes, 1555 West Middlefield, very similarly. And in many cases, no onsite affordable housing and no park space provided. And where there was a reduction in units, no park fees provided because the Parkland Dedication Ordinance only applies when there's a net increase in, in units. So my hypothesis is that the status quo is actively detrimental to the community. And I could not support anything that wasn't a dramatic change from what we have now because the development standards are providing an outcome that we know people do not like. And many of the questions and the input that we've received speak to that. People are concerned about displacement. The current development standards have been facilitating displacement. Residents have expressed a desire for park space and for affordable housing. The current development standards are not providing those things. We've had strong support for replacement requirements and for robust anti-displacement strategies. Those will only be financially feasible if we have development standards that can enable that, the kind of development that would, you know, allow a developer to substantially replace, you know, naturally affordable units in whichever way we, we wanted, we wanted to implement that. The current development standards are not going to do that. And I think that if we don't have, in my mind, the intention isn't housing production per se. I'm not seeking a dramatic upzoning simply because we want to unlock new housing units. It's because we wanna create the community that, you know, will benefit our residents for generations to come. And the current development standards are not doing that. So I hope that something similar to the subzones that staff are recommending will be supported by the council because I think it will help address the many goals that we're trying to, we're trying to respond to here. The densities and the heights, I think, will be necessary to make the anti-displacement work financially feasible. So for question one, I support, generally speaking, the subzones. I do think there are areas where we could have a higher starting point. So I think somebody had referenced the Del Medio area where I live, and that's the San Antonio Shopping Center. I think that's an appropriate area to consider, R3D, something along those lines. The area on the other side of 85 was referenced. I think that's another appropriate location. And I also, this is more question two. I do think exploration of some kind of transit overlay would be beneficial. I think areas that are supported by high-quality transit are going to be able to support higher densities and, and maybe things like reduced parking requirements. So I do wanna support that as well. And then for question two, I agree with staff on the special design overlay. I don't think there's any need for that. I disagree with staff on the height overlay. I was looking at the maps and in some areas, you know, there was R3 zoning without a height overlay adjacent to the single-family area. I couldn't justify retaining it for some areas and not having it for others. And the other area I wanted to point out was the neighborhood near Terabella. There's, on the, the R3 side, there's a height overlay restricting height. But the, the limited industrial zoning district already allows for substantial increases in height. So I, I don't remember if the Google building at 1,001 North Shoreline is four stories or five, but it was very difficult for me to justify saying, on the industrial side, we can have four or five-story buildings, but on the R3 side, we would have to limit ourselves to one story. It's kind of a, I think, not, not the correct prioritization in my mind. So I, I don't see a lot of value, especially without knowing the history, in retaining the, the height overlay. So those are the general comments I have. I guess just some additional remarks. I appreciated Councilmember Showalter's suggestion to facilitate parcel aggregation where it makes sense and allowing higher intensity development. When that's done, I would like to explore that. I also support the planning commission's suggestion that in certain areas, R3A and R3B could allow for greater density. That might be something we could address with a transit overlay. And I also think that over time, we should use this as an opportunity to retire some of the older precise plans or the planned community zoning where we might have archaic development standards that otherwise reference R3. So I know that's not within the scope of work right now, but I do think that's an important consideration later on. Just as a final concluding remark, one of the other reasons why I think we have to be really careful about how we approach this is if we constrain development too much, we could start incentivizing bad behavior. One of the things, I was talking to a friend in, in real estate a little while ago about this. The Ellis Act applies, I think, for 10 years. Those are the regulations that we have here for rent-controlled units. If a property is taken off the market for more than 10 years, then it ceases to be impacted or regulated by the Ellis Act. If we say that you can't redevelop your land because of whatever development standards that we're, we're providing here, you know, if we restrict things like rowhomes and we, you know, make it basically impossible for property owners to derive the value of their property, they might start doing extreme things like withdrawing their properties from the market in order to evade things like rent control and, and create displacement in that, in that way. Property owners are allowed to withdraw from the rental housing market if they want. State law prohibits us from regulating that. So I think allowing the density and the height is important. I think it makes the anti-displacement work feasible. I think we can't allow the status quo to continue any longer. It's not working. And I think staff has done a great job providing some preliminary recommendations. And I look forward to working with you to create designs and guidelines that enable the kind of development that our community wants to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Thank you. So I, I agree with, with much of the way that Councilmember Ramirez started out. His, I think that was a helpful review of the, of the past. The list of demoed flats replaced with high-end apartments with no parks and, and so forth. At the same time, I wanna be really careful not to set ourselves up to kind of jump out of the frying pan and into the fire and find ourselves in a, a situation that's just as bad or worse. So, so generally, I would say I agree with, for the two questions. I agree with the R3 subzone approach and overlays. But I, I would like to set up a lot of caveats or additional things to, to look into. The, the first one is that, that several people have brought up. It's, I have concerns about displacement. I have concerns that I wanna make sure that we have, and I know we've addressed this in the questions, but I wanna make sure that we really do have adequate mechanisms to make sure we have something like a one-to-one replacement of affordable units. Whether that's a local version of SB 330 or sort of some sort of Ellis Act-related legislation or something else. You know, I don't wanna move forward until we have something like that. The second concern I have is that, as some other council members, I believe, I think it was Councilmember Abicoga said, there, there are large areas with the R3D that almost look like they beg for more than just a, a simple upzoning. Because, I guess somebody wants, because density alone doesn't make walkability or doesn't get people out of their cars, doesn't make, you know, vibrant communities. You need additional amenities and we really need guidelines to make sure that we get those. And, and people have mentioned parks and streetscaping, which are two that we absolutely need. But you, you also can't get people out of their cars if you don't have any place to go. So our general plan envisions or specifies basically neighborhood-serving retail. And I'm not, when I look at a lot of the, the configurations, the housing types, they look like, they look like places that, you know, should have something for the public on the ground floor. Not everywhere, and you can't, we, it doesn't look like we would have the density to have that everywhere. But, but I've seen places where when you have the density that is envisioned in the R3D, have ground floor uses that are open to the book. So for example, my son lives in Madison, Wisconsin, which is a beautiful town, the size of Mountain View and Sunnyvale put together, surrounded by farmland. which is a beautiful town, the size of Mountain View and Sunnyvale put together, surrounded by farmland. When they do housing of this density, they put gyms that are open to the public, something like Soul Cycle on the ground floor. They don't put private gyms in. They put, uh, you know, they put coffee houses on the ground floor. Um, you can't do that everywhere, but I don't want large slaths of land with, you know, no landscaping, no parks, aggregated blocks with, as members of the public said, um, fencings that you can't get into. Um, that's not the direction I want to go in. Um, I want, I want to make sure that we have a variety of, uh, unit types. By that, I mean different sizes, not just one-person units and, uh, different housing types too. I don't want the same kind of housing stamped over and over again. I think, a- and then also when I walk through these areas, there are, um, you know, these, Mountain View, uh, you know, we, we may not get in architectural digest a lot, but we do have some architectural types that are, um, that, that Silicon Valley is actually known for some architectural types that are fairly well-known. Eichler and, um, Eichler's lesser-known cousin, uh, Mackies, which are all around some of this area adjacent to, um, where we're looking at doing R three D. And when I knocked on doors in this area when I was campaigning, people are very proud of those architectural types. And I would like to make sure that, uh, when Opticus goes forward and makes, um, whatever, the guidebook or whatever, that some of the, uh, prototypes that they show, they don't show, you know, craftsmen homes and Spanish-style homes because honestly, that's not typical in this area. But they show mid, mid-century modern, uh, prototypes that they show. Um, you know, some people tell me they feel like they're living in a vacation home near Tahoe in the woods, that we have, you know, streetscaping with trees, not just lawns out front, that we do, that we refer to the character of the area. So, um, I, so to sum up, I like things I'm seeing, but I want, I want really a lot of strict guidelines. I don't just want to upzone and go forward because I think, like I said, we'll be jumping out of the frying pan and into the fire.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with many of the things that have been said, particularly by Lucas Ramirez. Uh, thanks for all those comments and sort of setting up the, um, the importance of really equity and, and why we're doing this. Um, we want to make sure that we, um, we create housing policies and land use policies that, you know, that are really supportive of our community and maintaining the diversity of our community. So for question number one, I, um, I support the, the, uh, subgroups that the, um, uh, staff has suggested. I would like to see, I think, them denser than, um, than they are currently. And I think that, um, we, we should, I, I'm not necessarily as, as happy with the distribution as I am with the, with the concept of the subgroup. So the suggestions that people have made, I, I think are good ones so far about like Del Medio. I think Ed de, Ed de Mary is another way, uh, place to be looked at for maybe upzoning a little bit. Um, I think that we should, so that's, that's question one, right? And then question two is about the overlays. And, um, I really think that the overlays that staff has shown us on that map are, um, are, they're legacies and I don't think they're appropriate any longer. So I would like to see us get rid of those and, um, and institute a transit-oriented overlay like we have for commercial property. I think that's been really positive over the years. And, um, and, uh, the, the impacts of being near transit are so important for, um, livability and, and, uh, reducing parking and, you know, living, possibly living without a car, all of those things. So I would like to see us establish a residential transit-oriented development, um, overlay. Uh, I think that we need to include guidance for streetscapes. Uh, people have mentioned this before. Another reason is, um, is climate change protection. Uh, I mean, all of that greenery, it, uh, it puts out, um, oxygen and, and, um, reduces our GHD emissions and it provides shade which reduces temperatures. It's good for people's well-being. It's really good for, um, for floodwater protection if we ever have any excess rainfall again. So, um, I think having, uh, you know, having, um, street sage guidance is really important. Everyone values the trees and, um, and the greenery. So that, that needs to be included. Another thing I think is, is really significant is how we deal with transitions. Um, uh, normally, I think, i- in the past, the city has gone through a, a couple of variations of that. And I, I would like staff to come back with suggestions of what, what they assume the transition is. I think that a good transition would be one to do sto- one-to-two-story variation over the adjacent building, either what, what it's built as or what it's zoned for, whichever is greater. Um, so, but I would like to, I, I, I think that we should, um, flush that out and discuss that more carefully. Another thing I would like to see explored, um, is, uh, requiring all apartments that are built in R three to be mapped as condos. Um, we have built very, very few condos in the last twenty years in Mountain View. And, um, uh, I know when I talk to developers about that, they always bring up the, uh, the litigation, um, risk that they are, that's involved with condos. So if we, if we required them to be mapped and then they could wait the ten years before they were sold as condos, I mean, it wouldn't happen immediately, but it would allow the conversion of condos that hasn't gone on for a very long time here. So that's another thing I would like us to be thinking of. So, um, thank you, Steph, for all the work you've done. This is really a big, big project. It requires lots of thinking and, um, uh, I look forward to taking part of it in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Madashek?
Thanks. So, um, I really have concerns about where this project is heading. And it seems like it's really taken a, on a different direction from, um, the original intent. And, um, I thought the original intent is, um, Councilmember Abicoga and Mr. Alkayer mentioned was to look at ways to incentivize stacked flats that are ownership units for the missing middle. And, um, when I asked the question on figure one, which of those housing types are ownership, um, it was only one in each category. The rest were likely rental units. And so I'm not really sure we're accomplishing the objective that I had for this project and I think we as a council had for this project. Um, I, I feel uncomfortable moving forward with, uh, the staff recommendations or answering the staff questions because I think we as a council still need to get on the same page in terms of what we're trying to do here, um, because I don't, I don't think we are on the same page. Um, and so I would like to do that first. And what it seems like is being looked at is just, um, an increase in density um, across all R three. And, you know, when I look at how much time went into the general plan and the precise plans and the change areas, I feel like, um, the council deciding that we're going to, uh, change the R three zoning without the amount of, um, input and process that we had for the general plan, the change areas and the precise plans, it's not sitting well with me because that's our typical process and our community is used to that process. And I would like to continue to follow that process. So I, um, am more in favor of us saying, you know, maybe we need to update the general plan if folks aren't up for that. You know, if we want to potentially identify, um, a couple change areas, not all R three, and then check in with our community and get their input on those, before we do something that's across the city, um, I would feel more comfortable with that. Um, I'm very concerned about increasing, uh, density across the board without the infrastructure in place. Um, you know, I, we've heard a lot about parks in the past few months. And, you know, I feel like some of us have been talking about parks for years and how important they are and how we need them for our community. And we are not, um, able to have as much park space as we want to have. And I feel like this is heading in the wrong direction with adding more people without the park space that we want, um, on a per-person basis. Um, you know, I also worry that some of these areas that were identified are not near transit. And so then we don't have the transit infrastructure in place to support the additional growth. So I, I feel like it's kind of premature to be saying, yes, this is the direction we want to go. Again, I feel like we all need to get on the same page and we need our community to buy into, um, a process for potentially changing even more areas than we had originally laid out in the general plan. So I, I don't feel comfortable at this point, um, saying, you know, yes or no on the questions. I also want to point out that SB three thirty did stop the displacement. And I know, you know, we're thankful for that. Um, so I, I don't have the concern that was expressed that we're going to continue to see displacement because SB three thirty made it incredibly challenging for anyone to redevelop their property, which, you know, hey, that's a good thing. Thanks.
Okay, so Councilmember Abicoga, then Councilmember Lieber, and then I'd like to chime in, if that's okay, Vice Mayor, before you get second round? Okay, great. Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, and, um, thank you to staff and our consultant for the work that's been done. Um, when we talked about doing this, um, I guess, you know, I, I wasn't really sure, uh, what, what would come out of it. So, um, it, it, it's helpful to see, um, see the, see the results or the first iteration of them. Um, but I, as, you know, my line of questioning, uh, uh, probably already revealed, um, you know, my interest was really to, the focus was how to incentivize ownership stacked flats. And, um, I agree with Councilmember Madashek. I'm not really sure where the council, my colleagues are on that question. Um, so I think we do need to maybe step back and figure out what we were really intending with those, um, the changes in R three zoning. Like, I, you know, I know that some of the, um, standards are old and outdated. Um, I think with five-five-five, Middlefield, you know, project, we saw that gap in the thirty-six to eighty-unit, um, count, right? And so I was thinking that might be cleaned up with this. Um, I've always been interested in Form Base Code and, um, so was excited at the opportunity of looking at how that could work. Um, but this is a little bit more than I expected. And, um, similarly, as Councilmember Madashek mentioned, and, you know, having been through the general plan update, um, process, I, I feel like this is quite a change that we really need to go back out to the community and get that, um, input and, um, buy-in before we make these, you know, the, the substantial changes. Um, I could go and, you know, answer the questions just to, um, answer them, um, because I don't know, you know, where folks are. But I would say that, and, you know, I think I can even live with a hybrid. And, you know, as I mentioned, maybe it could be by size of the areas, the geographic areas. But, you know, in particular, I'll point out areas that I'm really concerned about, um, the Rex Manor neighborhood. Their single family, that's a single-family home neighborhood in existence in there. I just am concerned that it's all dark purple. And, and when I was walking precincts in that neighborhood, folks were already concerned with the, um, increase in development. That's where all the, you know, row homes were frankly getting built. And, um, they're much higher than those one-two-story, um, homes. And so I guess I really am concerned about transitions. And it's just a large, you know, amount of geography that, um, if we're going to add that much more density, we really need to look at amenities and so forth. And so for me, um, you know, I may, maybe because I'm used to it, I think the general plan updating and the precise planning process seems to be a better way to look at accommodating amenities, whether it's retail or the, the, you know, standards of, of sidewalk, um, lifts and so forth, because I've seen too many one-off gatekeeper projects come in when we don't have those standards and we end up with, you know, challenges like we did with five-five-five Middlefield. So, um, you know, that, that would be my, I think, I think we need to have that discussion as to whether we need to revisit the general plan update. It's, you know, it's supposed to go to twenty-thirty and we're nine, nine years out now. So I was hoping it would last through my time, but if maybe I need to think about, you know, starting it in the next few years, um, I, I think we need to have that conversation. And, um, perhaps it doesn't have to be a full update because I think what's in there is pretty, still quite relevant. But when, when we're looking at change areas in particular, I think that's where we really need to have the community conversation. And that's my concern with this is we're looking at some major change areas without going to the public about it. Um, I will say that, um, you know, if we're gonna go this way, um, again, as I look at the size of the areas, um, maybe they could be automatic upzoned if they're smaller parts, smaller areas. But when you're looking at complete neighborhoods, then I think we should look at precise planning. Um, I think we should be, um, and I mentioned this, the, the two areas, Rex Manor, Colony, even the California streets, um, the dark blue. I think there's room for upzoning there, but again, my concern is where's the park gonna go in that area? Um, in terms of the subgroups, um, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive up to R C, R three C. Um, the D, I had questions about in terms of how it interfaces with R four. It's, it seemed to me that it might actually be more than what R four allows. So I would like to see the full spectrum there before I decide if I like R three D or not. Um, and then, um, we've already talked about the issues about affordable housing and so forth as well and how we're going to incorporate, um, that, those needs. Um, I will say with SB three thirty, um, and someone mentioned one-to-one replacement, I do think we should, we'll, we will have a, the, the study session on displacement, or how to avoid displacement, I guess, strategies. But with SB three thirty, and, you know, I don't really know the intent of SB three thirty, to be frank, because, um, if it was to avoid displacement, to just stop development, I think it's been successful in that way. But if it's really to get folks, get developers to do the one-to-one replacement, and if I, I don't think it's, um, from, I remember our study session on displacement, I don't think that's feasible is what staff said. And so they were going to come back to us, I think, with what that proportionality could be to be feasible. So, you know, SB three thirty is in for five years and I think it's, in a, in a way, it served a purpose to give us a pause. But the one-to-one replacement, I believe, if I recall our study session, is going to be a big challenge. So that's something, and that's why I think at the end of the day, if we want more affordable units, the city has to be involved with, um, you know, nonprofit partners, um, to do that. And so we need to make it easier for us to be able to do that. Thanks. And then number two, um, I'm fine with trying out the strategy. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I'll, I'll take, um, number two first. And, um, I, I am, uh, I do agree with the proposed approach to the overlays. I am very interested in seeing, um, a transit-oriented, um, uh, overlay, uh, for residential. Um, and in terms of the, the first, um, question, um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with us, um, getting into the weeds of where exactly should the, the particular zones, um, be tonight? Because it feels like it's, it's stepping out of our policy, uh, role and into a, a city planning role that, um, most of us on council- that um most of us on council aren't um professionally involved. And I know that we do have one city planner on on council. Um, and uh I've obviously mentioned it before about the the displacement. And I I have the concern that um even when it's one-to-one, we have a large number of essential workers um right now in Mountain View who could not now qualify for a new version of the housing that they're already living in and and paying on, in the sense that they're paying a larger percentage of of their income to rent than would be allowed to obtain a new unit. Um, and and so I'm really eager to use the greatest care and and just saying, well, people are widgets that we will pull out of one slot and put into another slot. Um, you know, for all those economic um complications. And I do think that the economic complications of COVID will last for a number of years for lower-income families that have gone to credit cards and loans and et cetera. Um, and also just the the life circumstances, the life impact of of those kinds of things. Um, and then I'm also very interested in the walkability and connections for walking and and bicycling. And I'm sorry that I didn't write down the woman's name who was the community member who talked about um getting through various blocks. Um, and that's that's a real issue that we already have in Mountain View is that we have sections of town where a neighborhood abuts straight up to a very large development and you cannot pass through. Um, and so you have to go, you know, really a considerable distance and into less safe bicycling or walking conditions to pass through those neighborhoods. And so I'm um very interested in seeing what the the um pathways would be. I think that the Park Place was a great example. Um, because you can pass through the the overall development in a in a very safe way. And you consistently see families walking and biking um through there. So those are just um uh some of the uh the things that I'm looking at. But I I do want to progress with this.
Great, thank you. Um, so I see that Vice Mayor has his hand up, but I'm gonna take a take a stab before we go back to you for for second round, if that's possible. So um I know we have the the two questions before us that staff would like to answer. Um, I want to thank staff for bringing this forward as a study session again. I know you're getting robust discussion from us. Um, but I thought kind of I'd like to to share a little bit about my my thought process as I was approaching the the two questions. Um, so, you know, I think when it comes to looking at development in our city, we've created a roadmap where we have the general plan, we identified change areas. We've gone through, I think, three or four precise plans. And now, you know, we're looking at maybe what else needs to be changed or what fell through the cracks. And so I think that's where the conversation about looking at our our three um came up initially. And and trying to, I think, some some um colleagues have mentioned looking at different housing product types and having a variety. Because I think it's not only the architectural design that I at least personally would like to see a variety of, but it's also the 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 product type. Um, and so I agree, that's what I thought we were going to be discussing when we um when we're looking at R three. Um, and as I as I approached these these two questions, um, for question one related to the subzones, um, I was struck by by the the map in terms of of equity of the distributions of the range of subzones from A, B, C, and D. It seems like all of the density will be in nine four oh four three, which is our most economically disadvantaged community, we had zip code in in our city. And I think that's where the displacement conversation um really hits home for for me. Um, I know that we're still talking about displacement strategies and we're discussing them in tandem. Um, but even with some some of the strategies, looking at like first right of refusal or first right of return, um, there there is no guarantee that the the new product, whatever that will be. Um, you know, where will people live in the the interim? Um, so while I like the idea of creating, you know, subzones or zoning out or how having some sort of, perhaps, uh roadmap for how we're approaching our 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 three revisions. You know, I think I would have preferred looking at, rather than, you know, perhaps economic feasibility, I would have liked to have seen our our three revisions related to proximity to transit, um, proximity to parks and open space as um, as we're talking about upzoning so that people have those built-in amenities. Um, I do agree that, you know, when we're talking about um greater densities and projects that are going to be, you know, eight stories or more, we we typically talk about some sort of community benefit. And I feel like I, a little bit of cart before the horse, you know, I'm I'm happy to to talk about creating changes and and streamlining and providing revisions, but I also need to know how that's going to benefit our community, both our our existing community and the community that we're trying to build. And I think, at least for myself, I would have also liked to see the the subzones as like nodes in our area as, you know, we've been looking at the precise plans, we've been looking at creating complete walkable, likeable neighborhoods with with amenities. And I would have liked to have seen that incorporated into the R three um subzone. And I, and those standards um rise to the top for me more than kind of the the design standards that were that were in the staff report. Um, and so when it comes to question two about the overlay zones, I think it makes sense to find a a way to resolve the kind of outdated um policies. Really interested to see, you know, where those came from as staff is investigating the the history on that. I know there's been discussion about doing a transit overlay zone. I wonder, at least for, you know, could the the transit zones be part of the subzone map um a- a- as part of the the requirement? Appreciate the the conversation about the parcel aggregation. I think that that makes sense to me. So I'm comfortable to pursue that. But um, uh, you know, lastly, I think there's been a lot about the community dialogue. I think if there's anything I personally learned in the pandemic is that the community really wants to be engaged and really wants to be involved. And if we're talking about um the this type of density, um, yeah, I'm comfortable about the conversation, but I want people to feel included. And in a time when we're able to have virtual meetings and and have different ways to do community outreach, I'd love to have more of that. I'd also love to include that in our multilingual outreach today. We're 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 having this conversation without any of our translators present. And I really don't know how robust of a conversation we're able to have on this topic if we're looking at all of the density going into nine four oh four three. So I just think that that's something that that needs to be um perhaps in the next iteration of this conversation. All right, uh, Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciating the time. I'll I'll try and be brief, uh, but just a a couple of things that I think are are worth uh keeping in mind as we continue the discussion. Um, you know, we're we're talking about a a conventional zoning district that includes a lot of older buildings, many of which are probably nearing the end of their useful lives. And also a number of buildings, uh, soft-story apartments and that kind of thing uh that are are unsafe. And I know we've talked about that in the past. I think this is an important opportunity to think to think about as these properties redevelop, because they will at some point. How can we achieve many of the community goals that we've talked about, including increasing affordable housing and park space and minimizing displacement? Because they're going to redevelop. That's that's what older buildings do. Um, particularly given the existing market pressure uh that that we've seen, uh, leading to a lot of the development proposals that that I was highlighting earlier. Um, and even though I agree that SB three thirty has provided us a reprieve, uh, as has been mentioned, it's going to expire and relatively soon. And there's no guarantee that the legislature will will continue the one-for-one replacement requirement. Particularly, as Councilmember Maticek highlighted, it makes redevelopment darn near impossible. So I can imagine many developers advocating to the legislature for changing that to make development feasible. Um, so I I feel it's incumbent on us, which, you know, I know we're talking about this at another time, but we have to figure out the anti-displacement component, because I don't think we can count on the state to solve that problem for us. Um, and uh, the the last component of this is keeping in mind that SB three thirty passed two years ago. We still have these kinds of projects in the pipeline. We're going to have a, I think, very difficult discussion. I don't know if it's later this year or early next year, about five seventy South Ransdorf, a project that will result in the demolition of seventy naturally affordable rent-controlled apartments with many lower-income Spanish-speaking families and replacing them with eighty-five row homes with no onsite affordable housing or parks. And the community will be asking us, why didn't SB three thirty protect us? And I didn't mean to end with such an ominous note, but this problem hasn't gone away. And I think that's why, you know, we have to get this right. And unfortunately, we have to get it right the first time. Um, but I appreciate a lot of, agree totally, you know, community input is is essential. Um, I wish we had the luxury of time to think about something like a general plan update, which I would support. And we talked about it in twenty nineteen and four of us did recommend it as part of the the work plan at that time. Um, but I think because we see this impact our community so substantially within the past two years, um, we have an opportunity to make our conventional zoning districts work for us. And that's what I'm hoping we can proceed with uh over the next year or year and a half. Thanks.
Councilmember Maticek.
Thanks. Um, I think we had quite some time ago talked about, um, you know, we can't imagine SB three thirty is going to stay in its current form forever. Um, and that the city should be working on our own version of SB three thirty. Um, because we couldn't imagine that one either getting extended or staying in its current form. So I I would prefer we focus on that um before we go any further on this. Um, and really, as you said, Vice Mayor, get this right, because right now we do have a window of opportunity because of the state's SB three thirty. But I don't know, you know, how long that's going to last. Are they going to change it before it sunsets? And so I would like to focus on our own version of SB three thirty to address displacement and put this on hold and make sure we have a robust community input process before we go forward with changes to zoning. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, more hands. Councilmember Hicks and Councilmember Abi Koga.
Well, I'll say something super short, just to give everybody time to think all the One of the, one of the things that came up since I last talked was this overlay zone for when the properties that are very near um heavily trafficked streets. And although I, most people, most councilmembers, I think, spoke in favor of getting rid of that. Um, I I actually, because of changes in building and insulated windows and so forth, I actually don't want to see buildings built, even if you have insulated windows and walls, built right up next to very large streets. Um, so I don't know the details of that overlay and I'm I'm certainly open to some changes. But I I do think that there should be tree buffers between large streets and large amounts of housing. Um, so I would modify that, but, you know, I I've seen, as I drive around the Bay Area, I've just seen way too much um housing where you could reach your finger out and reach your hand out and touch the cars as they drive by on the freeway. And I I don't want to go there in Mountain View. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go to Councilmember Abi Koga and then I'm gonna turn turn to staff.
Thank you. I just wanted to um support Councilmember Maticek's comments. Um, I, you know, listening to uh everyone, I see the the concerns and displacement is definitely, you know, important. So I think we do need to get that right first. And like, I I guess I'm questioning whether doing this R three upzoning is going to really achieve the um, you know, intent of of um mitigating displacement. So I think we need to, and you know, before I wasn't sure, I I didn't have an opinion. Right now, I feel very strongly that we should discuss displacement first and get that um buttoned up before we move into looking at upzoning R three. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Schalter, I see your hand, but I need to turn to staff first, if you don't mind. So um, there was a question about when the displacement strategies are coming back. Can we get, have an answer from staff on on that question?
Yes, um, we believe it's going to come back in Q four of this year. So late fall is is where we think it's gonna, uh, we're gonna come back with that uh for now. And um I'm going to check with the teams after the study session and see what additional work we have to do to get there. So that's our estimate for now.
And what, sorry to ask a a question, um, and when is this, when would R three be set to come back to council? After today's
Um, after the displacement study session, we would have another, a third study session on R three to, because there's a fair amount of homework we have to do based on what we heard today. Um, and then additionally, any outcome of the replacement requirements are going to have to be uh built into the R three if there is um any synergy between those two and the councils interested.
Okay.
So, yeah, it it would happen after that. And uh if not, we were, we were hoping to bring it back later this year. But depending on on how much work needs to be done, that might have to be postponed.
Okay, so I I I think just being cognizant of time, since we're about forty minutes over, um, you know, I want to give Councilwoman Schalter an opportunity to speak, but perhaps staff can can then answer, you know, what they what they need from council or perhaps what um what potential next steps could be kind of given all the robust discussion you've heard um would be helpful. Okay, Councilwoman Schalter.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that it seems like with the schedule that staff has has described, that really what is coming next is um a a robust look at the displacement. But I think everybody agrees is really crucial. So um I I for one, I'm I'm all for that. But at the same time, I don't want staff to stop working on R three. So I think that um, you know, it is important for them to go on uh in tandem. And we just need to make sure that the um uh the displacement is is done properly before we we get much further with the R three. But that doesn't mean that the the staff needs to stop working on it.
All right, thanks, Councilwoman Schalter. So um, I don't, does staff, would staff like to to respond about kind of what they what they think could be a path forward, um, given everyone's comments?
Yeah, um, I I'll try to summarize and then see if the city manager, who's also been taking some notes, can, wants to supplement. I think the one thing we heard, and this was a seven oh, um, the displacement response has to be resolved before the R three standards are in place. Um, a a whole number of issues that we're gonna, that we need to continue with very and even enhanced public outreach. Because we want to make sure the public is brought into this um uh issue and they understand what's happening in the city. Uh, so we're definitely going to work on that. Um, what we did here, as I was trying to summarize things, was um while there is general support for the zones, um, uh, there were, there was two council members who had clear concerns about ideally wanting a general plan update. The rest of the council was okay with moving forward. However, there were some large caveats. I think there's concern about the R three D, definitely. Uh, there's concerns about the distribution related to geographic distribution near some lower um scaled residential areas, equity issues, to make sure that we're looking at that as we um as we do that. In addition, there was concern about making sure um in the standards uh about R three D and solving for the R four issue, uh, there were some concerns about that. Um, uh, additionally, I think the council was concerned about streetscape, walkability, uh, connectivity, so that mid-block connectivity uh, connectivity, so that mid-block connectivity, a diversity of housing types, how do we get it? A diversity of building types. Um, that kind of summarized the, the, the most of it. I think there was some interest in, in taking a look at, uh, in terms of the overlays. I think I, there was general agreement, but there was some interest in looking at, uh, transit overlay. Um, there were a couple of councilmembers who disagreed on the height overlay, but the, the rest of the council seemed to be okay with, um, where staff was going. I think we need to do some additional work on that and give you a couple of options so you can decide ultimately with that. Um, and this transit overlay and taking another look at the criteria we're using. Um, you know, the connectivity is important. And finally, we have to solve for amenities. I think the whole idea of complete communities is important, um, for parks, um, you know, neighborhood-serving retail, where it could be located on the ground floor. We do that in El Camino. Can we do that on major roads? We're already looking at that. We, we tried to sort of limit the amount of information we're bringing here just because it was so heavy, uh, but we're looking at all that. So, uh, I think this group does have a lot of work to do, particularly in the areas we mentioned. Um, but there was, there was general support, although there were some concerns mentioned about the, about the change areas. Um, so, uh, we are moving forward displacement response, definitely enhancing public outreach. And the idea based on council input is to, uh, is to continue work on the R three. However, resolve for a lot of these issues that were brought up so we can bring options to you.
That sounds close to the, the notes that I took as well. And I would say maybe some were more nuanced in their, in, in their comments about general plan update. But I think that the request would be if that's a direction, but could, could we, the revisions we're looking at for, for R three be compiled into a, a greater general plan update, perhaps at a later date? I, that would be my suggestion slash question. Because I, I, I think one of the things we're hearing is there's an urgency to this issue about both R three as well as displacement strategies. And that's one of, at least that's what I heard. So I don't know if staff can be responsive to the greater comments about, uh, perhaps looking at a general plan update in the future? Or do you need council to do that as part of our should, should?
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe I can summarize what my notes say and, you know, we can have councilmembers confirm. I think we heard two clear yeses for general plan update. And, and five councilmembers who are willing to move forward without specifically doing a general plan update. We have to say, we will note though, that, uh, we are gonna make amendments to the general plan to up, up, upgrade the densities based on the final recommendation. So that's there. Uh, whether we do it after the general plan update and identifying them in change areas, we heard, um, that, uh, the majority of the council was comfortable moving forward without doing that. Um, so not waiting for, um, a general plan update. And I, I want to confirm that with the council.
So I see four nodding heads, but I, but I wouldn't say that I feel, I mean, I wouldn't say I feel comfortable, but I, but I would say that there's a study session. The next item coming back is it will be a third study session. So I, I, I feel like I haven't reached maybe perhaps the same level of discomfort as my colleagues, but I would say like, these are the things that I'm hoping for in, in trusting staff and hoping too, that there would be a way for, you know, I heard the Vice Mayor just talk about, you know, we, we did vote, there were four people who did vote on a council goal of updating a general plan up, or pursuing a general plan update. So I wouldn't say it's just five, two. I, I don't really feel like that's an accurate summation. I think that that's where the urgency issue is coming in. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that, if that, so.
Um, so ju- um, just to clarify, is the, is the direction, general council direction to move forward with a third study session and then decide whether to do a general plan update?
I see, I see heads nodding. So can, can folks perhaps just indicate with a, a, a thumbs up or a hand up if they're okay with it? Okay, Councilmember Abi Koga, is that a hand up for this or would you like to speak? Thumbs up, okay. City Manager McCarthy.
Uh, Mayor, um, just a couple of things. I, can I get more clarity on the, the general plan update on this support for that? And then I would also note for, um, a general plan update in general, this is not something that we have talked about as part of the work plan. This is a significant, significant undertaking, um, in addition to any R three update. So I, I just want to make really clear to council that the work plan is coming to you all on April twenty seventh, and that work plan does not contemplate a general plan update. That is not one of the projects that was added. So if council is desiring to add that, we would need to talk about that and then talk about all the other projects that would have to fall off staff's plate in order to do the general plan update and then how that would actually, uh, merge with this R three update. So I, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about that. Um, because right now that is not on the work plan.
If, if I may add, the last general plan update took four years. Uh, so that, that'll give you an idea of how long it would take, after which the R three would happen. So, um, I would say as staff, we need some direction tonight on whether the council's interested in us moving forward with R three or, or not moving forward and waiting for a general plan update to be added to the work plan. Um, after which, you know, so it'd be four years after which we take up the R three.
All right, we have two hands raised. Councilmember Abi Koga.
So I, um, I guess for me too, it's premature to decide this because I'd like to see what you come back with on the R three. If it's, um, you know, significantly changed and you've been able to incorporate all of the comments that were made, then we may be able to move forward. But, you know, in general, I, I'll just say that I think this is a pretty drastic change if we keep it the way it is. And so if this is what comes back, then I'm gonna push for a general plan update. But if there are changes, um, incorporated that makes it more, um, you know, more, uh, have more transitions and so forth, more, and incorporates all of the issues of, then, you know, I, I could see perhaps moving forward. But a big piece of this again is gonna be community input. Cause we've heard from folks, but these are frankly folks who are, you know, very interested in housing issues and they're mostly the housing advocates from what I saw. But I just have a feeling if you put this out into the neighborhoods and the community, just like we did when we did the general plan update, we're gonna have hundreds of other, you know, like residents who, your average resident's gonna be interested in this. And so I just want to make sure we do that before we make these changes because these are significant and these are not in areas that were agreed upon as change areas. And frankly, the argument for housing in North Bay Shore was that it would avoid putting more housing in these other neighborhoods. So if we're not gonna fall stick to that commitment, I think we really need to go back to the community. So that's my number one concern here. Um, so, but yes, so I think we need to see what you come back with before we decide which direction to go. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Lieber and then Councilmember Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not willing to sandbag every other single thing that we could be doing for a four-year-long, um, general plan update. Um, I, I, I think in particular, some of the pieces of this that, that really makes sense are, uh, the transit-oriented development. We have said that we have a very large commitment to sustainability and that's part and parcel of that. And, um, being very close to mass transit is, is not, um, what, one of the inherent strengths of, of North Bay Shore. Um, I, I see that as proximity of tra- of housing to jobs, um, but not necessarily to our, our transit spine, um, which is Caltrain and, and El Camino. Um, and so I would like to progress with this. Um, I, I think it does make sense for the community and I think that we can, um, do a great deal of community outreach. But I don't want to get into saying that certain groups are, are just housing, um, people and so therefore we can, um, set them aside because really the, the individuals that we've heard from in terms of letters are, um, longtime community members in Mountain View and people that are very engaged in our community and, um, do care about housing because it's one of the biggest issues that, that we face frankly. Um, and so I, I would like to see us, um, progress with this. And, um, I, I know that it sounded like staff was, um, saying that there would be general plan changes that would come out of this process. Um, and I think that that's really important to note. And, um, always having an eye towards, uh, the community involvement. But I, I think that, um, for the sake of our environmental concerns, sustainability, uh, the need overall for housing, um, we have to progress and, and not be, um, sandbagged into a, a four-year position on things. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks.
So I just want to agree, I think with, um, more or less with what the two previous councilmembers said. When I was sort of, when I was giving my thumbs up to, uh, the, the comments on the general plan, what I thought I was giving my thumbs up to was, um, that we would see how, um, how staff incorporated all the, the myriad of suggestions that were made. Oh, I also agree, I don't want to sandbag all the other things we're doing. So we would see how, um, staff incorporated all, all the comments that we made tonight. Um, and we would, uh, decide about the general plan if that's absolutely necessary, given, you know, if, if we're not progressing on, on the things that people thought were important tonight. You know, the additional amenities in neighborhoods, the streetscaping, the, the, um, uh, well, I think that the, uh, stemming displacement, you know, all those things, if those aren't coming together, then maybe we would have to look at a, a general plan update. But I'm not putting that on the table right now, or I wasn't when I was giving it a thumbs up.
Thanks. I don't, I didn't hear anyone bring up the four years, so I don't know how that all started. So I think that we're in a good place where I, I would say we're not, we're now an hour over. So, um, you know, staff will come back for a third study session. I think at this point, we just need to decide if we'd like to move forward. I think that the comments about the general plan, my understanding was the same as yours, Councilmember Hicks. Um, and I, I, I think I just wanted to add that caution to, to staff. That's, that's what I wanted to do. Because for me, we, some of us have, have been a part of the Terabella process. Um, and I just don't want another Terabella process where staff works for three years on a change or on an area that was not a change area and that the community has a lot of, um, input that was not received and then we don't proceed forward after staff working on something for three years. So that's, that's all I'm saying, you know, is I just want staff to be thinking about this as they come forward and do we need to be looking at that somewhere down the road? Not today, not to, not to do anything today. So that, that was my, that's my understanding. Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Abi Koga, and then perhaps I'm hoping staff has everything that they need, um, so we can move on.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I, you know, I, I guess I took offense to the comment of sandbagging because we're not sandbagging anything during the general plan. That one took four years, yes, but we got a lot of other things done in the, as well. So we're not sandbagging anything. And I didn't say that the folks who have been commenting don't count. I'm saying that there are eighty thousand people in this city and we need to do more outreach to get more voices in. Thank you.
All right, well, I think that we've had a robust discussion. We all knew that perhaps talking about R three was gonna be this way. Um, I, I believe staff has what they need. RT, can you just confirm?
Yes, yes, we do. We'll continue and come back for the third study session.
Okay, you probably have more than what you need. All right, so how about if we take a ten, yes, I see your hands, uh, Councilmember Schalter. Let's take a ten-minute break and we will come back, okay? All right, thanks, everyone. See you in ten minutes and, um, Ms. Vonder. All right. Thanks, everyone. See you in 10 minutes. And Ms. Vonderlinen. I wanted to announce that the city is accepting applications for the downtown property and/or representative of a business, the Performing Arts Committee and the Senior Advisory Committee. You are invited to apply on our website at mountainview.gov. So hopefully you will do that. I will move on to item two, which is our roll call. Our interim city clerk, Vonderlinen, will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Avikoga.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lieber.
Here.
Councilmember Madacek.
Here.
Councilmember Scholter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamay.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. All councilmembers are present, so we'll move on to item three, which is presentations. Our first presentation is going to be in honor of National Volunteer Appreciation Week. And I will read the proclamation now. Just one moment. Whereas throughout Mountain View's history, residents have actively volunteered their time and energy to improve our community and make our city a better place to live. And whereas volunteering increases self-confidence, makes a difference in the community, provides social opportunities and a space to learn new skills, and connects you to others. And whereas volunteers in Mountain View mentor our children, feed our hungry, comfort our lonely, beautify our green spaces, and support our charitable organizations. And whereas our residents have stepped up to the challenge during the COVID-19 pandemic to show immeasurable unity, compassion, and kindness by supporting families, friends, neighbors, and strangers. And whereas the spirit of volunteerism grows stronger in the face of even the most challenging situations. And whereas National Volunteer Week is a 47-year national tradition designated throughout our nation for the purpose of recognizing and honoring those individuals who give of themselves and to promote and encourage a sense of giving and service by all citizens. Now therefore, I, Ellen Kamay, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, take great pleasure in congratulating and thanking our volunteers of the City of Mountain View. And do hereby proclaim April 18 through April 24, 2021, as National Volunteer Week. So maybe we can give our volunteers a virtual round of applause. Ms. Vonderlinen, did we have anybody joining us for this one? I don't believe.
For this one, thank you.
Great, thank you. So before I move on, I'll just say, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, so we can do, how about two minutes, Ms. Vonderlinen? I know we're trying to catch up now. Tim McKenzie, hold on just a minute, Tim, we're going to get you the timer. And whereas our residents have stepped up to the challenge during the COVID-19 pandemic to show immeasurable unity, compassion, and kindness by supporting families, friends, neighbors, and strangers. And whereas the spirit of volunteerism grows stronger in the face of even the most challenging situations. And whereas National Volunteer Week is a 47-year national tradition designated throughout our nation for the purpose of recognizing and honoring those individuals who give of themselves and to promote and encourage a sense of giving and service by all citizens. Now therefore, I, Ellen Kamay, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, take great pleasure in congratulating and thanking our volunteers of the City of Mountain View. And do hereby proclaim April 18 through April 24, 2021, as National Volunteer Week. So maybe we can give our volunteers a virtual round of applause. Ms. Vonderlinen, did we have anybody joining us for this one? I don't believe.
For this one, thank you.
Great, thank you. So before I move on, I'll just say, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, so we can do, how about two minutes, Ms. Vonderlinen? I know we're trying to catch up now. Tim McKenzie, hold on just a minute, Tim, we're going to get you the timer. Okay.
Okay, brief. I just wanted to take a brief moment and recognize and thank all the volunteers in our community who do housing advocacy. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Great, thank you. All right, those are all the people I have for a public comment on this item. So we'll move on to item 3.2, which is recognition of Kami Lowe in recognition of Cal Cities Women's Caucus Women of Persistence 2021 Award. So some of my colleagues may know I have been serving on the, it used to be the California or the League of California Cities. Now they've rebranded to Cal Cities. I've been on the Women's Caucus for the last three years. And we have the honor of recognizing a woman of persistence in our community. And this year, since we've gone virtual, we had to honor Kami virtually. So it's my honor to present this certificate of recognition to Kami Lowe. In my personal view, Kami is an unsung hero. Her commitment to making the City of Mountain View and the greater community a better place to live, work, and play is done with great dedication and stewardship. Whether it's promoting youth wellness at Mountain View High School, planning a community event with leadership in Mountain View, or leading in our community, Kami can be found at the helm. I'm so honored tonight to have nominated Kami for this award and so happy to have her receive it. And I'd like to ask Kami if she'd like to say a few words with us.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much, Mayor Kamay. I am honored and humbled to receive the Women of Persistence Award. I guess you must have found out, as my friends and family know, that I can be pretty stubborn. If I may take a minute or two to say a few words to express my gratitude. I think my persistence stemmed from being a Chinese-American immigrant, working really hard to put down roots back in the 90s. Drawn to the innovative spirit and incredible diversity of the Bay Area, my husband and I decided to raise our family then right here in Mountain View in the Bay Area. Our two teenage sons have both grown up in the public school system in Mountain View, where the seed of my volunteerism was first planted by the amazing teachers of PACT, which stands for Parent-Child-Teacher. This is the parent participation school that now resides at the Stevenson Elementary School. It was a pact that I first learned the true meaning of the African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." I got to work with many wonderful dedicated volunteers there to spearhead an outdoor science program for eighth graders of Crittendon and Graham Middle Schools. And then later coordinate the Spartans Paul Student Mental Health Program at Mountain View High School and mentor underserved first-generation students through the Avid Program. In the past few years, my volunteering efforts branched out to Canopy, an environmental nonprofit that provides tree planting, education, and advocacy services to mid peninsula communities. As we all know, it takes decades for a seedling to grow into a mature tree and certainly takes a lot of patience and persistence to grow healthy trees and healthy communities. I continue to be inspired by the steadfast focus and efforts of all the staff and volunteers that make up what I call the Canopy Village. The Leadership Mountain View Program also helped deepen my connections with the community. Just like growing urban forest, long-term city planning, as you all know, requires collaboration, patience, and of course, persistence, especially when we want to achieve a balance between intentional development and green spaces for all. I'm so grateful for the collective continued efforts of the city council, staff, and community members to try to transform our city into an even more diverse, inclusive, sustainable, and accessible place. I really look forward to a day when our collective hard work bears fruit, so everyone in our community can enjoy a greater quality of life and thrive. Last, I want to give a big shout out to all the unsung heroes in this meeting space as well as in the community at large who keep their heads down and work hard every day to make Mountain View a better place. Thank you again for the recognition, Mayor Kamay. I very much appreciate all you all do for our community.
Great, thank you very much, Kami. We'll just give you a virtual round of applause. It's such a great thing to honor you today as we're talking about National Volunteer Appreciation Week. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing. And I know many of us have had the honor of planting our mayoral trees with you, or we'll have that honor in the future. And so thank you very much for making our place a greener place. So thank you very much. And your patience, sorry, we ran late.
No worries. I know R3 is a very important issue. Have a good rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bye.
So at this time, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, I see one hand, Alexandra Brown. So Ms. Vonderlinen, if we could do the two minutes again. Oh, I see more hands. Okay, two hands. All right, Alexandra Brown, go ahead.
Yeah, I got to plant a tree thanks to Kami. So thank you, Kami. That was fun.
Great, thanks for that. All right, I think that concludes our public comment. So we can move on to item 3.3, which is a COVID-19 update by our city manager, Kimber McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy, feel free to take it away.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. I'm going to share my screen now. Start my COVID update. So one of the most interesting things that has happened over the last couple of weeks, a couple of things I'll start off by talking about. First, you can see that from the numbers here, I'll draw your attention to the bottom row really, which is focused on Mountain View. So you can see that since the last update, which was about three weeks ago, there have been about 78 new cases in Mountain View. So this is about an average of three cases per day. And if you recall, over these last many months, this number is going down significantly. They're also seeing that at the county where the number of positive cases are going down. Right now, there's around 116,000 positive cases so far since COVID started. So what, what does this really mean? In terms of the, one of the most significant things that happened statewide, we are seeing not only the case numbers go down, not just in Mountain View and the county, as I just mentioned, but also statewide. So the governor announced three So the governor announced recently that we are set to reopen the whole economy on June fifteenth with a couple of caveats. The first is that our vaccine supply must be sufficient. And if you remember, over these past few weeks, I've been talking a lot about how the county has had significant struggles with getting the number and availability of vaccine doses than we actually should be getting. So in a couple slides, I'll talk about that further because this problem actually has recently been resolved in our county, at least for now. So that's the first piece of reopening is just making sure that supply is there across the state. The second piece is also making sure that our hospitalization rates are stable and staying low. So if we meet those two standards, then essentially, per the state, all of the economic sectors that have been in the current, what's called the blueprint for the safer economy, all of those sectors will return to usual operations. So really what that means is that the common sense health policies will still be in place to continue wearing masks, making sure that folks are vaccinated. But it really means that we will return to what looks like normal before we got into this pandemic. So we don't know quite yet whether that will officially happen June fifteenth. As long as we keep those two things in mind about supply and hospitalization rates, it does look like we're headed that way. So with that, I do have some updates on city facilities that have reopened partially. So on Monday, our police department's front lobby did reopen with some modifications. So it has been closed this entire time. The lobby is now open from eight to five, Monday through Friday. And the community is encouraged to make appointments online for certain services. However, they will accommodate walk-in traffic with some certain restrictions. And obviously, you still have to follow the same protocols and wear a mask. Also, we will be having a difference in how we're servicing everyone with the library. So starting April fifteenth, we will be partially reopening, reopening some services in the library. So we will have in-library browsing and hold pickup inside the library, Thursday to Saturday, from two to six. We'll also start allowing computer appointments up to forty-five minutes. That's also Thursday to Saturday, from two to five forty-five PM. We'll still have the grab-and-go hold pickups outside the library that will continue, but that will be on Tuesday and Wednesday, from two to six PM. So as I mentioned, the law has changed and what also has changed is the tier that we're in and the blueprint for this day's safer economy. So Santa Clara County did return to the orange tier just this past, actually, two weeks ago, Wednesday, March twenty-fourth. So we have to stay in that tier for three weeks before we can move into the highest tier, which is the yellow tier. So our case rate is still a little too high to move into the yellow tier, but it is likely that we will move into that tier probably before that June fifteenth opening date. So as I mentioned before, vaccines have been, the supply of vaccines has been an issue. The county did hold a press conference today that, right now, as of today, anyone over the age of sixteen can get an appointment. And this is because they have received a larger supply of vaccines. This is a, this is a big change from what we've been talking about lately. So they announced today that tens of thousands of new vaccine, vaccination appointments, excuse me, will be open the remainder of this week, and many more appointments will be open starting next week. And this is because the county is receiving direct vaccination dosages from the federal government now. This is through a program operated by the Federal Health Resources and Services Administration. Prior to getting the direct dosages from the federal government, the counties do receive their dosages from the state, state allocation. So this is a big change and is also why they're allowing anyone over sixteen to make an appointment and get their vaccine. So we encourage everyone to go to www.sccfreevax.org and get your vaccination appointment set up. Then I've also showed this dashboard several times. This dashboard shows the number of, or percentage of folks in the county that are vaccinated. So the blue, the blue line there shows the first dose. The green line is stacked on top of it. That shows folks who have received the second dose. The pink that you see is the Johnson and Johnson vaccination. So the last time I presented this update, we were at around sixteen percent of countywide residents who are vaccinated over the age of sixteen. Now we're at twenty-seven percent. So what this is indicating is that we are at least getting towards the county goal of vaccinating at least eighty-five percent of residents who are sixteen or older by August first. So again, this is a good development. It shows that we are vaccinating more and more people. And now that there's more dosages available, I expect that the next time I give this update in a couple of weeks, that we'll see that number increase hopefully by quite a lot. Then in terms of our community center, what's happening there? We are extending our hours this week. So it will be extended by ninety minutes. It's going to be from eight-thirty to six-thirty. And this is all due to that increase in supply. So we want to make sure that we can get in as many people as possible. The last appointment will be at six o'clock PM. So far, we've vaccinated over thirty-seven thousand people at that site. And just last week alone, it was around thirty-five hundred vaccinations. So another thing that we're doing that I'm really pleased that our fire department has really stepped up and shown great leadership on is they are delivering vaccines to folks who are homebound. What this means is people who are unable to drive, folks that may be in wheelchairs or on crutches. There is a program that people can sign up for to get included as part of this homebound program. They can go to covidvaxhome@phd.sccgov.org, or they can call four oh eight nine seven oh two eight one eight to begin this process. And I would note that just residents in general can't contact the fire department or contact either one of these, the Public Health Department email or that phone number I just mentioned. This really is for people that are in those categories where they're unable to get to an appointment or they're homebound. In terms of testing, we want to encourage folks to still get tested. The county has indicated that they are seeing a decrease in testing rates, and that's likely because there are more people who are vaccinated. I'm not sure why these graphics are doing that. That's never happened before. So sorry about that. I thought that it was me and they were just getting larger, but I noticed that they're the graphics. So in any event, so far at our city facilities, we have provided over fifteen thousand five hundred tests. So far this year, we are at almost thirty-five hundred tests. So we want to still continue people to get tested. We do have new opportunities coming up at our Center for the Performing Arts on Tuesday, April twentieth, and Thursday, April twenty-ninth. Then just an update on the rent relief program. This is something that I do every week, or excuse me, every council meeting. Right now, we have expended a little bit over four point three million dollars in rent relief. There are little over two thousand checks that have been cut to households in need of rent relief. And in terms of how much total funding is available, five point three million is available. So there's still a little over a million dollars left in this fund. And the average assistance does continue to be a little bit over twenty-one hundred dollars for the average check cut. Then a couple last updates that I want to make sure that the community knows about. A community survey is underway right now for the public to weigh in on changes that we have in an upcoming smoking ordinance that we'll be bringing to council in May. So this would prohibit smoking in multi-unit residences, so that will include apartments or condos, townhouses, triflexes. So the amendment would prohibit smoking inside the dwelling or on outdoor patios and decks. So in order to get feedback, please go to mountainview.gov/smokingordinance. This is going to be available in both English and Spanish through May tenth. Also a reminder that we're celebrating Earth Day virtually, the evening of April twenty-second, from six to eight-thirty PM. And the event is going to feature speakers, including microtalks from community members about how they're restoring the earth. We're also holding two contests where community members can really show off their sustainability experience. So there's going to be a video competition and a student poster competition. So for more information about how you can register for this, please go to mountainview.gov/earthday. Then one last update, a reminder that we are doing our Mountain View Film Festival later this month. So the theme is race, equity, inclusion, and this is our first ever film festival. You can get tickets to this virtual festival by visiting mountainview.gov/mvfilmfest. And day one and day two passes are twenty dollars each, while a festival pass for both days is thirty-five dollars. And then I'll just end by thanking staff, as I do with each update, highlighting some of the great work of our team. So we heard a little bit about the team in the earlier item, where we have a multicultural engagement program team who plays a really crucial role in providing important updates and outreach to community members in Spanish and Mandarin Chinese and also Russian. And the team has been really involved in providing multilingual outreach to residents in various ways over the course of this last year, including COVID-19 resources, helping residents navigate the website, being available to answer phone calls, translating meetings and certain events, and also supporting outreach to various projects that have gone on over these last many months. So I want to give that team a great, big thank you and shout out for all the great work that they do for all the residents in our community. So with that, Mayor and council members, I'll thank you in my presentation and just remind everyone to continue wearing their masks and stay healthy. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Great, thank you so much, City Manager McCarthy. Does anybody have questions? All right, seeing no hands, I'll turn it over to public comment. Would any member on the line like to provide public comment on this item? If so, please raise, click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, I see no public comment. So thank you very much, City Manager McCarthy, for your very thorough update. So we'll move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? All right, I see Councilmember Maticek.
Thanks. I think the Vice Mayor had his hand up before me.
Sorry, you came up in my queue. But I'm, I mean, I'm happy to defer to him first. Sure, okay. Sorry about that. Vice Mayor Mares.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. And thank you, Mayor. So I would like to pull, I know this is unusual for me. I generally don't like to pull items, but four point three, street reconstruction project. And I don't want to pull four point five or four point ten, but I did want to express strong support and thanks to staff for their work on the Sidewalk Cafe, you know, downtown business support program. I think that's been terrific and I'm very excited to support that. And then also for four point ten, the San Antonio Mini Park, ordinarily, there's an item, a public hearing, but I wanted to express my support to staff for making that a consent item and also look forward to supporting that item. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I hear item four point three pulled. Councilmember Maticek, looks like you're next.
Thanks. So I did want to pull item four ten, because I'd like to propose a slight modification to that. I'd also like to, well, I prefer to pull four one, but I can also just register a no vote on that. I sent in a lot of corrections to the minutes from twenty nineteen, and I still feel like they need another pass by staff, but if others are comfortable with them, I'll just register a no vote on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
I'd like to pull item four point two for a slight modification.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to abstain on four point one. I know that it's kind of a wobbler under Robert's rules of order, but generally, you don't vote on minutes for which you weren't a part of the body. So I'll just abstain on the item.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so I think for the items that were, I heard pulled, we'll start in numerical order. So we'll start with item four point two, if that's okay, which is the adoption of an ordinance for the Parkland dedication. I believe that was you, Councilmember Hicks.
Yes, I just wanted to see if there was support on council for making one small change that we talked about earlier, but I maybe didn't propose it clearly enough. It's on page nine of the ordinance, two A I I I, which is eligibility criteria. It's the minimum dimension of the size was a hundred feet, and I'd like to bring it down to seventy-five feet minimum, which would just, with the same minimum size and everything else the same, it just changes the shape of the required rectangle. So it can be, it just gives a little more flexibility for developers, but I think gives the same quality of park. So I would like to know if there's support for that.
And before we get going, I'm so sorry, in my effort to kind of streamline, I forgot to take public comments on the consent calendar. I believe that's why the city attorney has his hand up, unless I'm wrong.
Actually, I had another issue, but that, that too, you could, you could take public comment and then I have another point.
Okay, perfect. All right, so let's open it up to, would any member of the public like to provide public comments on our consent calendar? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or star nine on your phone. All right, we'll do two minutes. Alexandra Brown.
I just wanted to congratulate several of our Mobile Home Alliance members, Joan in Guadalupe, for their appointments to some bodies. I am so proud to see members of the community stepping up to volunteer and serve. And also just thanks to everyone who volunteered. I think that boards like this are great and a good opportunity to make an impact in the community. Also, good job Live Nation on providing parking for people so that they can also stay safe in the community.
Great, thank you. Peter Katz.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Kame and esteemed and esteemed council members. I'm Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our beloved but severely struggling downtown restaurants, I want to voice our support of item four point five. If you ask our businesses what has been most helpful or would help them in the future to recover from the devastating health emergency, they'll invariably cite the ability to continue serving outside, which allows them to extend the number of tables they can serve and thus increase their desperately needed revenue. And second, fewer fees and permits related to continuing and extending their operations. In the past, obtaining sidewalk cafes has been, sidewalk cafe permits has been a challenge for many. The city's streamlined process in implementing Castro's streets has been both welcomed and needed. These merchants have been doing everything they can to ensure compliance with rapidly changing conditions and regulations, pivoting for over a year through closes, reopens, reclosures, reopens again. As noted in the resolution, reinstatement of the Sidewalk Cafe program will cause many struggling businesses to incur even more expenses, including equipment, retrofits, insurance, and the like. This is neither easy nor cheap. Please allow them the lead time needed to comply. We also fully support the city's commitment to studying the situation further to determine the best plan for downtown, in particular, completing the Castro Street pedestrian mall feasibility study. The chamber continues its commitment to work together with the city for our businesses and the public to ascertain what will be the most beneficial to fostering a vibrant, inviting downtown and a thriving local economy. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Tim McKenzie.
I just want to echo what Alex Brown said about thanking Live Nation for the safe parking. I think that's important that for our city to continue, especially as we deal with the pandemic. And I'd also like to And I'd also like to echo what was just said about 4.5, about outdoor dining downtown. I saw that Mountain View Voice had an article about maybe keeping outdoor dining after the pandemic. I really love Castro as a pedestrian mall, and that would be great to have. And I look forward to engaging with the Public Safety Advisory Board as they begin their work plan, as events around and the nation show that there are still a lot of work that we can do, and we can do a lot of work in our local city to demonstrate ways of keeping the public safe, the community safe, and building strong community together. And I look forward to continuing to engage in that work with both the Public Safety Advisory Board and with council. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam C.
Hi, I'm Miriam, from the Rex Manor neighborhood. I wanted to comment on item 4.4, the appointments to the Public Safety Advisory Board and Rental Housing Committee. I am speaking today on behalf of the Mountain View Coalition for Police Reform and Accountability, or MVCPa. I'd like to welcome the members of PSAB to their new roles and remind everyone that PSAB was established by the Ad Hoc Council Subcommittee on Race, Equity, and Inclusion in the wake of George Floyd's murder last summer in order to take a critical look at policing and public safety in Mountain View. It is meant to serve as an instrument for increasing equity in our city. This is a difficult task and a serious responsibility. MVCPa has been watching the progress of the REI and the PSAB with a lot of interest. So I'd like to introduce MVCPa's principles and goals so you know where we're coming from as we work together going forward. MVCPa members believe in four core principles. One, we should reduce the scope of policing in Mountain View. Two, public safety solutions must amplify the voices of communities most affected by racism, eh, goodness, racism, and criminalization of poverty. Three, institutionalized racism is real and it is our duty to dismantle it. And four, taxpayer money should go to nonpunitive rather than punitive solutions. In line with these principles, we are echoing the calls by students and educators at the last city council meeting to remove student resource officers from Mountain View campuses. The HRC reported last fall that youth who attended their listening sessions overwhelmingly had negative experience with SROs. So we asked both the PSAB and the council to look into removing police presence from Mountain View campuses. Thanks for listening. Congratulations on your appointments, and I'm looking forward to working with both the PSAB and the city council to reimagine public safety in Mountain View.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comments. We'd like to bring it back to our consent calendar. So I have three items pulled, 4.2, 4.3, 4.10. But I think before we get into those, I know the city attorney has his hand up, and so I'll turn to him, but I'd also like to entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. City Attorney Chopra?
Yes, with regard to Councilmember Hicks' comments on item 4.2, it's not possible to make material revisions to an ordinance after it's been introduced in a certain form. The ordinance would have to be reintroduced. So those edits are material and they could not be acted on tonight.
Okay, I withdraw them. I didn't know.
Okay, all right. So then, are you comfortable then if item 4.2 goes back to the balance of the consent calendar, then Councilmember Hicks?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so I pulled items 4.3 and 4.10. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move to approve the balance of the consent calendar. And let's see if I do this right. So including 4.2, adopt an ordinance of the City of Mountain View, amending Chapter 41, Parkland Dedication or Fees in lieu of the rev ordinance of the Mountain View City Code relating to Parkland Dedication to be read in title only for the reading waived. I think 4.4 requires a reading, adopt a resolution of the City of Mountain View, of the City Council of the City of Mountain View appointing numbers in an alternate to the Rental Housing Committee to be read in title only for the reading waived. 4.5, City Attorney, that requires me to read the resolutions as well. So adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View temporarily suspending certain requirements for sidewalk cafe license renewals pursuant to Mountain View City Code Section 36.42 and waiving sidewalk cafe license renewal fee payments payable May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2022 to facilitate a consistent outdoor dining program in the downtown area to be read in title only for the reading waived. And two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, amending Resolution Number 18470 as amended by Resolution Numbers 18489 and 18496, temporarily suspending and designating parking restrictions and prohibitions pursuant to Mountain View City Code Chapter 19 and temporarily closing the 100, 200, 300, and 400 blocks of Castro Street pursuant to California Vehicle Code Section 21101 to facilitate outdoor dining and outdoor business operations to be read in title only for the reading waived. And is that, oh, and so 4.12, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View deeming the replacement of a section of a water main on San Antonio Road of urgent necessity and authorizing a ward of contract to the lowest responsible bidder with reduced advertisement and bidding requirements pursuant to Mountain View City Charter Section 1107 to be read in title only for the reading waived. And then 413 doesn't require anything. And then I'll just note that Councilmember Matascheck recorded a no vote on 4.1, and Councilmember Lieber recorded an abstention on 4.1.
All right, Councilmember Shawalter?
Second.
Great, thank you. All right, and I think everything that needed to be read was read. I'll turn to the city clerk and city attorney. Okay, perfect. I see their heads nodding. All right. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Ramirez and a second by Councilmember Shawalter. Let's, Ms. Fonda Linden, if you don't mind doing a roll call vote?
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Matascheck?
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to item 4.3 that was pulled by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and be brief. So I was originally going to support this until I saw in the response to council questions that, I think it was, let's see if I can pull it up, 27% of the households participated in the survey that was sent out to determine whether there would be vertical curbs or rolled curbs. And in my mind, this is a traffic safety issue. You know, we, for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, there's a very high threshold that has to be met in order to be eligible for traffic calming, you know, which again is a public safety issue, and I know we're, or a traffic safety issue. I know we're going to modify those to relax some of those requirements. In this case, I was struck by the fact that the, there wasn't as high a, a threat, there wasn't really a threshold to, to, to sort of side with the, the, the the construction type, I guess, the curb type that would provide greater traffic safety. In my mind, a vertical curb stops a vehicle, a rolled curb does not. The fact that so few households participated suggests to me that we should go with the safer option without the assurance that a majority of the households actually want the less safe option. My preference would be to approve this with the vertical curve as opposed to the rolled curve, and I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect if there's support. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks?
Well, I would support that for a second if it were a motion. It's a motion you're making.
Yes. Okay, so Vice Mayor, was that a motion? Just to clarify for your colleagues, was that a motion and you're looking for a second?
Yes, I'll go ahead and move approval 4.3. It doesn't look like the resolution needs to be read with the modification that we include vertical curves rather than rolled curves.
Okay.
And since this is a material modification to this item, I would recommend that the mayor ask for public comment on this issue also.
Thank you, City Attorney Chopra. So we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, and we have a second by Councilmember Hicks. Any other council comments on this item? Okay, Councilmember Lieber?
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm thankful that the Vice Mayor brought this up. I did look at this in the packet and had some heartburn about it stemming from a period of months, about a year ago, when I had to use a wheelchair. And the number of cars that will park partway up on the sidewalk because it's a rolled curb really does make getting down the street in a wheelchair very difficult, because what you end up with is half of a sidewalk that's not wide enough to get by. And so as a person using a wheelchair, you're in the street navigating. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Shawalter.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff if this change would slow down the process materially or change the cost. I'm, I am in favor of the safety ramifications of it, but I just wonder about this implication.
Thank you. This is Dawn Cameron, Public Works Director. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this would be a redesign of the project. And so we will have to take it back and redesign it. It will, we'll have to add to the project costs for it to be designed. It may also change the construction cost. So we, you know, if we find that we can redesign it and construct it within the current budget that we're requesting right now, we'll try to keep moving forward. If not, we'll end up coming back to council in the fall. I will note that, as you noticed, the street is in very poor condition. It's one of the worst conditioned streets we have in the city. We potentially will miss this construction season because the best time to do construction is during the summer and before you start hitting poorer weather conditions. After that, though, you know, I will say that I did ask the same question when I saw this, because a lot of this was done before I became Public Works Director. I was heartened to find out that staff did make an attempt to reach out to the community. As it noted, every member of the community was contacted and given a chance to respond to the survey. And 25% voluntary response to a survey like this is actually considered quite good. It does indicate that many members of the community were less concerned about it. As you will note in the council questions that we sent out, we did send them information with pictures about it. And the final piece is our traffic engineer would not have even offered it as an option to the community if it was not felt that road curbs are okay, they do work. They may not be totally preferred. And we can definitely, for future streets with the road curbs, be a little more assertive in really discussing it with the community, or we can just not provide them the option. And that's fine, too. We do not need to provide them the option. We can just go vertical curves. But it is a major decision you're making tonight if you want us to go back and redesign it as vertical curves, and we'll go back and talk to the community about it, because we may very well miss this construction season.
Councilmember Shawalter, was that all your question? Okay, okay, perfect. All right, Councilmember Abi Koga, then Matascheck.
Thank you. If the motion stays as is, I will not be supporting it for basically the reasons that Steph mentioned. And I remember this, this was actually a really big debate when we did the streets on Rex Manor, in the Rex Manor neighborhood, and we had a lot of input from, for folks who preferred the rolled curbs, because it is easier to roll your stroller for, you know, folks who might have lockers. We had a number of reasons from people, and so for that reason, we actually stuck with the rolled curbs there. And if it were a real, you know, safety issue, I don't think we could recommend it. But given the percentage that wanted, that supported the rolled curbs, I'm inclined to go with the residents' preference. And as Ms. Cameron mentioned, that the response seems like it was high enough. So I will, I would support the original motion on consent, but if not, if it's going to be changed. Plus, I don't want to delay the project anymore. But if we're going to change it, then I think we need to go back to the community. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Matascheck?
Thanks. I was wondering, I don't know if staff knows this off the top of their head, if changing from the roll to the vertical would have any impact on parking? That area, there's a lot of street parking, and I don't know if the road is wide enough to accommodate cars on both sides parking on the street. And especially in the area where there's, there's the tree in the middle of the street. You know, how would it impact that? And I'm inclined to go with the original plan, but I guess I'd like to know if staff has any information on that.
Thank you. In general, converting to vertical curb will not affect the amount of space that's available for parking, because we would align the curb so that it provides the same amount of parking space that you see today with the rolled curb. So I guess I'd want to make sure there's also enough room for people and bicyclists, too. So if the sidewalks were not being reduced in order to accommodate parking on the street. But in any event, I think I'm inclined to go with the original proposal. There was quite a bit of input from the residents there, and if that's what they prefer and that's what's there now, I don't really want to delay this. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? All right, yes, Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Just a quick note. So the motion does require five votes. Since an appropriation is necessary, if it doesn't pass, I'll be supporting the staff recommendation.
All right. And then, City Attorney Chopra, before we take a roll call vote on this, then I'll go to public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Ms. Fonda Linden, do you mind putting up a two-minute timer? Great, thank you. All right. Alexandra Brown?
Okay, hey. Now, I think I agree with Councilmember Matascheck that we need to make sure pedestrians and bicyclists are accounted for. I don't think that we should be prioritizing sleepytime spaces for big metal objects instead of the people that live there. I want to instead offer a third option to either a vertical or rolled curb, which is no curb and just close it off to cars and focus on the people, and that people use the street as they will. It's the safest option. It provides the most like flexibility and freedom. You could, you could add plants. It could be a pleasant place to be. You don't have to worry about getting hit by multi-ton objects moving at speed. But otherwise, no. I think we, that safety is paramount. We should prioritize lives over convenience. And there have been many times that I've been on a sidewalk and had to deal with someone who just rolled up onto the sidewalk to park with their SUV, and it's not fun. It's just irritating. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Tim McKenzie?
I would, I want to thank Vice Mayor Ramirez for looking through and seeing the safety issue. Good job reading through and looking at it. I have, I think, a somewhat technical question. If the curbs are rolled, how long is the street? How do we measure the width of the street? If we're thinking of how the city all integrates together. I think I, I don't have a particularly strong opinion one way or the other, but I think the walkability does sound like an important thing, and Councilmember Lieber's personal story really resonated with me. Like, if you're, if you're in a wheelchair and someone rolls up, I'm in Montaloma, we have rolled curbs, and sometimes people do park halfway up on the curb. and sometimes people do park halfway up on the curb. So it is a thing that happened that impacts the ability to move through the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes public comment, so we can bring it back to council for a roll call vote. I think for myself, I'll be voting no just because the community was surveyed and the community shared what they would prefer. So even though I think in principle, Vice Mayor, I would agree with you and Councilmember Lieber about the experience of using a rolled sidewalk, since the community, you know, almost 30% of the community voted in this favor. You know, I feel like we need to listen to them, so just wanted to say that before we get started. Ms. Fonda Linden, do you mind taking the roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Abi Koga.
So just clarify, this is Vice Mayor's motion.
It had a, it had a motion by the Vice Mayor and it was seconded by Councilmember Hicks.
No.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Madachak?
No.
Councilmember Scholter?
Yes, sorry.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamay?
No.
Motion fails. There's five motion passes, but not enough to pass the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
I'll go ahead and move to staff recommendation then with, not an addition, but commentary that if we're going to allow 59% of 27% of households, you know, dictating a traffic safety matter like this, I hope we would make the same accommodation for something like traffic calming when we talk about the Neighborhood Transportation Management Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scholter?
Second?
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Scholter. Ms. Fonda Linden, do you mind doing the roll?
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Madachak?
Yes.
Councilmember Scholter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamay?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to item 4.10, which was pulled by Councilwoman Madachak.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that we have the council policy that says we will spend 1% of the construction budget on public art or will allocate that amount to public art if the total spend is over a million. And it seems like at least a couple of years now, we have been asking staff to also bring back a 2% option that the council could consider when we do the final approval of the park. And so I'd like to ask staff to also bring back a 2% option on this park for public art. So that would be my motion that we tweak this to say not only bring back a 1% option, but a 2% option for council consideration.
Okay, great. Before I get to you, Vice Mayor, let me just turn to City Attorney Chope to see if this is a material change. Is that how you?
Yes, it would be best to get public comment on that proposed, that proposal. And also, I would ask if the Public Works Director or the Community Services Director might have any comments on that, on that proposal.
Okay, so I see Ms. Cameron here. So do you mind if I turn to staff before getting to you, Vice Mayor, so they can answer the question? Okay, great. Ms. Cameron, would you like to discuss that? I can move over Ms. Shavastava.
Thank you. Staff is fine with providing a 2% public art proposal if directed to do so by council. So yes, that is fine with us.
Okay, and I see Ms. Shavastava was able to join us, too.
I agree with Dawn Cameron.
Great, thank you. All right, Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you. Happy to second the motion, and I appreciate Councilmember Madachak for suggesting this.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Madachak and a second by Vice Mayor Ramirez to include a 2% option as well. All right, so before we take a vote on it, I'm going to ask if anyone in the public has a public comment on this, can raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, I see no hands, so I'd like to turn it back to Ms. Fonda Linden for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Madachak?
Yes.
Councilmember Scholter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamay?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I think that concludes our consent calendar. And I'd like to move on to item five, which is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment, public comment on non-agenda items? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. And I will ask Ms. Fonda Linden to update our timer to three minutes. Ready? Okay. And we'll pull up the timer and Tim McKenzie.
Hi, I just want to echo what Miriam said from MVC Pra, comment on the consent calendar with appointment to the Public Safety Advisory Board. I think that reducing the scope of policing is a great idea. And I'll remind council that sort of when the Public Safety Advisory Board came up and the Race Equity and Inclusion Committee was from the upswell that happened in the community last summer. We stayed together till like two or three in the morning, asking to defund the police or reallocate resources in a way that nourishes our community. I think that's something that I would, that we just had a budget session last week, but PSAD still hasn't even had its first meeting. There is no way that they will be able to have impact on the scope of policing or next-year city budget in the way that the community really was asking for. And one thing that did come up was removing school resource officers. This is the school-to-prison pipeline. Best-case scenario is that SROs don't exist. Like, if we're worried about kids really getting into trouble with the criminal justice system, then the idea of the SROs is to get the kids off that path. So in a best-case scenario, the kids will never interact with police officers in their regular lives again. So by definition, the program itself sort of shouldn't even really exist. It contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. That is something that is within Mountain View Police Department's budget, which is controlled by city council, and that is something that you would have time to act on. We've heard from kids who have, frankly, it sounded traumatized. It was, it was really heart-wrenching to hear the stories that came up. And this, like, the fact that they've had to do this repeatedly is really troubling. And I hope that council could take action. We've seen just this week, a police officer pulled out a, what they thought was a taser, and shot someone. Like, this is, this is going on, and it's not, it's not just something that's happening elsewhere. We know about MVPD calling Palo Alto Police and bringing in the K-9 unit. We know about MVPD hiring a Sunnyvale officer who was involved in an officer-involved shooting. This is not just tying national things to, projecting them on here. This does exist here, and this is a time where you have power to take action. And really, I hope that you will rise to the occasion. I thank you very much for letting me ramble for a bit, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Bruce England?
Hi, thank you. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just really quickly, Albert Jeans is going to be talking about left-hand turn lane at Middlefield and Shoreline, where a number of trees are slated to be cut down. And he and I have been talking about this. It seems like it's not the best idea under the circumstances. One sec. Someone is getting in the way. Because we don't know what the traffic patterns are going to be like post-COVID, and there are also going to be changes at 85 and 101. I'm hoping, and he'll talk about this some more, that this project could just be delayed until we see what happens after COVID, and maybe those trees could actually be saved. A lot of the changes around there that serve bicyclists and pedestrians are great, but this change is for serving automobile traffic, vehicle traffic, and perhaps that's not really needed as much as the plans would indicate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Albert? Albert Jeans? And I believe you have a presentation, so if you don't mind a few minutes while staff gets it ready for you.
Okay, thank you very much for three minutes.
I will, I'll keep the time on my phone so that.
Yeah, I have it, too.
Oh, perfect, all right.
As soon as she starts it.
Yes, perfect. Appreciate your patience.
It should be up.
Do you see it?
We don't, we don't see anything on our screen.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That looks good.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kamay, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and council members. I'm Albert Jeans, of course, 37-year resident of Mountain View in the Stearns Estates neighborhood. Next slide, please. Mountain View is about to lose four mature trees nearby neighborhood, three of which are large redwoods in order to put in a second left-turn lane on the west side of the intersection of North Shoreline Boulevard and West Millsville Road. Construction of the reversible transit lane has begun, and many trees on Shoreline Boulevard have been marked for removal with yellow ribbons. Next slide, please. Albert was dismayed to see yellow ribbons around some of the trees on the west Middlefield median strip. Then I remembered a Parks and Rec Commission meeting I attended in December 2018, where it was said those trees might have to be removed if they were too close to a proposed second left-turn lane. That got me thinking, why do we need a second left-turn lane? Next slide, please. The existing left-turn lane is about 250 feet long, allowing 20 feet per vehicle, gives a capacity of 12 cars. Next slide, please. Traffic count data pre-COVID, of course, show that the peak volume for this lane, outlined in green here, occurred between 8:30 and 8:45 in the morning when 41 vehicles were counted. Here's the evening data. Next slide, please. And you can see that it's actually lower, so we don't have to worry about that. So next slide, please. Since the signal has a cycle time of two and a half minutes, that's six cycles for the 15-minute interval, or seven vehicles on average per cycle lining up the turn. Next slide, please. Clearly, the existing left-turn pocket can handle that amount of traffic and more. You can actually make out three cars in this Google image. Next slide, please. The extra left-turn lane was originally proposed by traffic consultants as a mitigation for traffic from the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. Clearly, this one left-turn lane plays a very small role in the overall traffic mitigation plan, which includes much larger projects like the reversal transit lane and the northbound 85101 off-ramp realignment. Even before the pandemic, I noticed I'd never observed left turns here to be a problem. In fact, the congestion on the three lanes sometimes prevented cars from reaching the left-turn lane, so that a second left-turn lane would not help. Clearly, traffic patterns and lifestyles have drastically changed during the pandemic. There is no reason to believe we will ever fully return to pre-current residents rather than degrading it for hypothetical future developments. Do not trade four magnificent trees for one lane of asphalt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And in under three minutes, perfect. All right, that concludes oral communications from the public. So we'll move on to item six, which is our public hearings. So the first item is 6.1, Minor General Plan, Precise Plan, and Zoning Amendments. Principal Planner Eric Anderson and Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Archie Shavastava will provide a presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear and see you.
You're ready for me, good. Thank you so much. Let me share my screen. Great, thank you so much, Mayor Kamay. Thank you so much, City Council. My name is Eric Anderson. I'm joined by, of course, Community Development Director and City Manager Archie Shavastava. This is Minor General Plan, Zoning, and Precise Plan Amendments. The primary purpose for this is to clarify some general plan language. When the city adopted the general plan, it wasn't clear how density and intensity would be implemented in the change areas. So some language was crafted to allow flexible allocation of growth in change areas and precise plan areas. Now that we've adopted the major change area precise plans, we need to refine the language for a few reasons. First off, we've only implemented this flexibility through precise plans, so we don't need to allow it generally in change areas anymore. We would like to update the language so it's consistent with language adopted in the precise plans. And we don't need to reference the general plan environmental impact report anymore because these areas have adopted their own environmental analysis, which has superseded the general plan EIR. Since we are making these changes, we took a quick look at other sections of the general plan. And with Public Works' help, we identified some potential changes to update the street topologies, add, update multi-use paths to where they now exist, reference precise plans in some of the street topologies where the precise plans provide more detail about how to design those streets. And then, of course, modifying our level of service language because that language is now loaded under SB 743 interpretation. In addition, we're also making some minor cleanup map amendments to the general plan map, the zoning map, and precise plans. This was partly spurred by SB 1333, which now requires charter cities like Mountain View to maintain consistency between the general plan and zoning. It's also just good housekeeping. In general, they provide policy clarity and a set of consistent development standards for the affected sites. These are minor cleanup sites that don't result in significant growth. They can be done within the framework of existing zoning and didn't require any additional analysis or fact-finding. One issue that we kept in mind as we were doing this is SB 330, which forces us to maintain the highest density between either the general plan or zoning, if adopted, as adopted. We are also doing a minor cleanup for Wyandotte Park, which rezones the site to the zoning designation that we use for parks. That concludes staff's presentation. Here is all the language of the staff's recommendation. And I will just finally add that the EPC recommended these two separate actions in December and March. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you so much. So since this is a public hearing, I'll turn to public comment first. So would any member of the public like to provide comment on this item? Please feel free to raise your hand or press star nine in Zoom. All right, seeing no hands, I will bring it back to council for questions. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I could go ahead and make a motion, too, but first, I want to make sure I understand SB 1333. So SB 1333 requires cities, including charter cities, to eliminate inconsistencies between the zoning and the general plan, right?
It requires consistency, yes. I don't know the precise language for how that requirement works, whether it requires us to take a particular action or if it requires us to, you know, you know, kind of interpret them consistently. I don't know how the language is specifically structured.
Okay, so I'm having, I appreciate staff's response to the questions about the specific parcels where there will remain inconsistencies. If we don't resolve those inconsistencies, are we in violation of SB thirteen thirty-three?
If we... I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I I don't know the answer to that question. But certainly, if there are, we we would expect that if there is any, if anybody is interested in kind of taking action against those properties, you know, it would be the city in some of those cases, or somebody who's not interested in redeveloping those properties, for example. So those are our approach here is not to necessarily borrow trouble and to have a bring forward recommendations that we know are kind of easy pickings and not to bring forward issues where we don't know all the policy questions or the policy issues or all the facts or how the community would want us to go or anything like that.
Sorry, let me just add, I did want to piggyback onto what Eric was saying in that we do this as a matter of housekeeping as we find sites. You could, obviously, we don't always get the complete list of sites. As they come up, we address them. If there are some specific sites you're interested in having us follow up on that we may have missed, we're happy to do so.
I appreciate that. So I'm gonna go ahead and move the staff's recommendation, which is adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving general plan text amendments related to densities and intensities and street typologies and general plan land use map amendments at eleven forty-one West El Camino Real, one seventy-three to one seventy-five Santa Clara Avenue, and twenty-two fifty-four Wyandotte Street to be consistent with the zoning map, to be read in title only, further reading waived. Two, introduce an ordinance of the City of Mountain View amending the zoning map for the properties located at twenty, two hundred and fifty East Anna Street, three hundred to three twenty Moore Parkway, seven oh nine to seven eleven Baccaro Drive, and twenty-two fifty-four Wyandotte Street to be consistent with the general plan land use map, to be read in title only, further reading waived, and set a second reading for May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View amending the P thirty-eight El Camino Real precise plan to modify the character area at six fifteen South Ranksburg Avenue from residential only to medium-intensity corridor to be consistent with the general plan land use map, to be read in title only, further reading waived. And I'll just, a couple of concluding thoughts. I have a particular interest in this because we're doing this, where my day job had, you know, my employer city is going to be rezoning proactively over thirty thousand parcels that have an inconsistency between the general plan and the zoning. And their original philosophy was what you were describing, waiting for the property owner, if they wanted to do something, to submit a conforming rezoning, and concluded, after some heartburn, which we can talk about another time, that they can't do that, which is why they're doing this proactive rezoning for every parcel. So if I were to make a request, it would be, let's make sure we really understand SB thirteen thirty-three, and if we have to rezone some of the parcels that were in the questions to staff in advance in the meeting, and I know there are a couple of others that weren't included, like the Bruce Bowers site, if we have to do those, you know, we have to do them. I don't think there's an urgent requirement to do it. I don't know what the punishment for violating SB thirteen thirty-three is, but I don't think we can, I don't think we have the luxury of picking and choosing if it says we have to be consistent, including charter cities, and I think we have to be consistent. But I appreciate the work with the housecleaning that you've done so far and happy to support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilor Maticek.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so a motion by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilor Maticek. Councilor Marshall Walter.
I was just going to second it. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Great, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we can do a roll call vote. I don't see any other hands. All right.
Councilmember Avi Koga.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Maticek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Motion carries you now, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much to staff. Appreciate it. So we'll move on to item six point two, an introduction of an ordinance prohibiting possession of firearms on city property. We'll have a staff presentation by our senior deputy city attorney, Megan Merkovich, and police chief, Chris Young. Was I close on the last name, Megan?
Merkovich.
Merkovich. So close, okay. I'm Megan Merkovich, Senior Deputy City Attorney. I'm going to begin screen sharing now on my presentation. And can you confirm you can see it? No, we don't see anything yet. Oh, it looked like it was about to go. See. I'm sorry, some technical issues. No problem. This is the world we're living in now, no problem. Maybe if we have it on the city clerk's side, we can, okay. Thank you, Ms. Fonge London, you're reading my mind.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Hold it up.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much.
Of course.
And I can try to if need be. If you could just, I think, make it full screen, Ms. Fonge London, I think we are. There we go. Sorry about that. There we go. Perfect, all right. Okay, so this evening, I'm presenting the proposed ordinance prohibiting possession of firearms on city property. Next slide, please. In September twenty nineteen, the City Council requested staff return with a report detailing potential gun safety legislation. At a later study session, City Attorney's Office presented four options, including a prohibition for firearm sales as a home occupation, a locational restrictions for firearm dealers, safe storage requirements for firearms, and a prohibition on possession of firearms on city property. Council directed staff to return with a proposed ordinance prohibiting possession of firearms on city property. Next slide, please. That brings us here this evening. The purpose of this ordinance is to allow city employees to use facilities without fear of gun violence and to help reduce the risk of firearm-related injuries and fatalities. Next slide, please. This ordinance will expand current state and city regulations on firearms and public property. The city code currently already prohibits the possession of firearms in city parks, and the penal code prohibits the possession of loaded firearms, I'm sorry, loaded firearms and exposed unloaded handguns in certain public spaces. Next slide, please. With this ordinance, firearm regulation will include all categories of firearms, regardless of whether they are loaded or unloaded, and it will include all city properties. The violation of the proposed ordinance may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. In enforcing the ordinance, Mountain View Police Officers will not proactively contact members of the public. If an officer observes a violation, they may have discretion to cite or arrest based on their observations. There also may be overlapping state crimes, such as those in the penal code sections provided in the earlier slides. Next slide. And this slide includes the language of staff's recommendation, and that concludes my presentation. Will be able to answer any questions we have. Great, thank you so much. So since it's a public hearing, we'll go to our attendees first. So would any member of the public like to provide public comment on this item? Please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Ms. Fonge London, can we do a timer for two minutes, please?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. All right, are we ready? Okay, Dawn Vith. Hello, Dawn. You just need to hit unmute, I believe.
So sorry.
No problem.
Thank you for the time. Good evening. My name is Dawn Vith. I'm here to ask you to adopt the ordinance and to thank you for putting it forward. Ordinances are sometimes rather dry documents, but I found myself actually being moved in a few places of this one. In the first warehouse, for example, which talks about death and injury from guns reaching, quote, alarming and thus unacceptable proportions, end quote. Unacceptable is the exact right word, but we just need to start not accepting it. Another place was this, quote, "While governments at all levels have a substantial interest in protecting the public from firearm-related injury and death, local governments have the predominant obligation to do so." I think, end quote. I think I would argue that local governments have the predominant obligation only because the federal government has been prevented by national politics from taking up its obligation. But I thank Mountain View for acknowledging that it is an obligation, and we're all obligated to work to reduce gun violence now at long last. And finally, there's this, quote, "Whereas whenever guns and ammunition are present, even when they are being handled by knowledgeable and conscientious individuals, a danger of accidental shootings arises." This, end quote. This indisputable fact points to another thing that local governments can do, and it looks like you considered doing it in twenty nineteen. And I hope that Mountain View will want to take this up in the future. And it's the safe storage requirement that guns in one's home are locked up to prevent accidental shootings as well as impulsive suicides and burglarized guns, which so often end up involved in community youth slash community slash youth violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim McKenzie.
Hi, council. I want to speak in support of this ordinance. I'm not quite young enough to have had to have active shooter drills in high school, but apparently that's the thing that's going on. I think I just missed it a little bit, and this is a lived reality for so many people. So this is a way of taking action. The thing that was just mentioned about accidental shootings really just resonated with me, and you guys may have seen the story about this three-year-old child in Texas who shot his, shot an eighth-month-old, and the infant died. That, this is going, it's just, it's great to see this happening, like council taking action. I also want to mention, though, as we're talking about guns on city property, Dante Wright, who was shot during a traffic stop when an officer pulled out what they thought was their taser. Why was there someone with a weapon doing traffic stops? This is something that we could also think about. This is a way that we could de-escalate and demilitarize and reduce the scope of policing. We, this is, I just, this seemed relevant also. And I thank you for taking action on this. This is, it's really good and inspiring to see some action being taken, which is usually not done related to guns.
Thank you. Rachel Mickelson.
Hi there. Hi. Thank you, city council members, for your time and for your courage in bringing the issue of gun safety to the agenda. I believe this, what you are proposing tonight is a terrific first step for gun safety here in our community. However, the next step would be a safe storage ordinance. While our state has safe storage law, it does not provide the definition of what constitutes state storage. Six hundred children under seventeen every year die by suicide with a gun in the U.S. Four point six million American children live in homes with guns that are both loaded and unlocked, and that figure is not including the recent numbers that we know of increased gun purchases due to COVID. So it's likely higher. Just this week, as was just mentioned, a toddler and a baby were killed in Louisiana and Texas after children had access to an unsecured gun. Let's join the other cities in our county, Sunnyvale's one, Saratoga, and there's others in having a safe storage ordinance and taking this next very brief step. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Kelly Traver. I think you just have to-
Hi, yep, I got it. My name is Kelly Traver, and first, I just want to say I applaud you for this proposed ordinance. It's absolutely fantastic and much-needed. I also want to support safe storage of firearms. I think maybe there's a misunderstanding that the California penal code covers it, but it really doesn't. And I've actually sent all of you the actual California penal code with highlights in it. It really just says, put the firearms safely away if there's a child in the home or could be expected to come in the home. And people then put it in the garage, in between mattresses, on the fridge. You know, one in three homes in this country have firearms. Sixty percent are unsecured, and one child dies every day because of it in the United States. Two teens commit gun suicide by finding an unsecured firearm. And school shootings, of which we just had one in Tennessee yesterday, school shootings, eighty percent of the time, are students or former students who obtain their firearm because it's unsecured from their home or relative's home. So I just really want to ask you to please support it. Under COVID, forty-three percent, there was a forty-three percent increase in small child deaths because of unsecured firearms, and nine percent increase of teen gun suicides in the country from unsecured firearms. And now I'm worried, since we're opening schools up, we're going to see more school shootings, and I do not- And I do not want Mountain View to, uh, to have that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miriam C.
Hi, I'm Miriam again. Yeah, I think this is a great ordinance. As we open back up and we're starting to go back into public buildings, already the library is getting more open. I think guns not being allowed is wonderful. I'll feel much safer and also so glad I came to the city council meeting because I get to hear some of these other public commenters talking about other gun safety issues that I didn't know about, but sound like really great ideas. So I also support what I'm hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comments. We can bring it back to council, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we obviously heard a lot about safe storage and the question of safe storage has been something that I know that the community has been coming forward for at least eight years to talk with council about. And I was wondering from the senior deputy city attorney and city attorney, if we were to include a protective safe storage ordinance that closely tracks that in Sunnyvale, how long would it take us to get that to council?
I can answer that question, Councilmember Lieber. The city attorney's office currently has a number of large work plan items underway and litigation. I would say that if there's majority support for a safe storage ordinance, we would still need to study it and analyze the best approach for Mountain View, although there are models nearby we could borrow from. My best estimate, my most realistic estimate would be Q four of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Abi Koga.
Thank you. I want to thank staff for bringing this back. This was one of our work items that I advocated for, and I appreciate staff's hard work on this. I don't see any other hands, so I'm ready to make a motion. But I did want to, before I do that, follow up. My interest, and this was a discussion we had, I believe, when we were doing the work plan a couple of years ago. There are three other policies or recommendations at that time. And I remember the discussion and because of staff workload, we chose to just do this first one first. But I remember one of my colleagues, I think it was Councilmember Hicks, saying, well, maybe we could do, you know, one a year or something more than that, once, once things settle down a bit. So if we, if I wanted to include the safe storage policy or ordinance, should that be in this motion or should I make a second motion? Or I guess I'm just looking for a direction on how to move that as a new work item for the.
I think the, the best way would be to just treat this ordinance, which is before council, as its own item. And then after that, if there is council support to bring, bring the topic of an expanded ordinance at the April twenty-seventh meeting, where goals and priorities are going to be discussed, that would probably be appropriate. But I would like to check with the city manager to see if that is an approach she's comfortable with.
Thank you, City Attorney. Yes, that would be my recommendation.
I should just go ahead and make this motion first, and then we can talk about safe storage.
Yes.
And I saw a couple of hands go up while I was speaking. So if it's further discussion, I'm happy to hold off on making the motion. Thanks.
Councilmember Hicks.
Well, maybe I'm doing it out of order now. I was just going to say that I would support safe storage after we pass this one.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shawalter.
I'm a little confused. Was the motion made?
It was, Margaret was going to make it, but then she saw your hand and Councilmember Hicks's hand go up.
I was gonna, I was going to second it, Margaret. So why don't you jump back in and make it, okay?
Thank you, appreciate that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve or introduce, I'm sorry, introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View, adding Article five to Chapter thirty-eight of the Mountain View City Code relating to firearms on city property to be read entitled only for the reading wave and set a second reading for April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Perfect, perfect timing. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And I think kind of given the conversation, if it's all right with you, Councilmember Abi Koga, we'll go through the roll call vote on this and then we can come back for additional. Does that work? Procedurally, City Attorney, does that work?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So Ms. Von der Linden, may we do a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Abi Koga.
Hi.
Councilmember Hicks. Yes. Councilmember Lieber.
Hi.
Councilmember Madacek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yeah.
Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so I'd like to turn it back to Councilmember Abi Koga. I think you had more you wanted to add.
Thank you. So I believe if I have to make a motion for this, I'd like to make the motion that we add the safe storage ordinance to our work plan item for further, just, I don't know, we need to further discuss it on April twenty-seventh, but I would like to add it to the work plan.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to clarify. So I understood the recommendation from the city attorney and city manager to add it to the list of new items that were under consideration with some evaluation from staff about impacts to capacity, things that we might have to push out to make it work. Is that, is that what the motion is? Okay, I'm happy to second that.
Okay. Yes, I saw a nodding head and a thumbs up, just in case our colleagues didn't see that too. Okay, great. All right, so there's a motion from Councilmember Abi Koga, seconded by the Vice Mayor on adding safe storage for staff evaluation and work plans. Did I sum her, is that right? Okay. All right. Ms. Von der Linden, do you mind taking a roll call vote? Do we need a roll call vote or would this be a straw motion? Sorry.
Just a show of hands is fine.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to double check. All right. Looks unanimous. Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Is there anything additional on item six point two? All right. So I'd just like to thank staff and we can move on to item six point three, which is twelve fifty-five Pear Avenue. And I want to ask council members if they wish to make any disclosures, such as contacts with the applicant or site visits. And I think kind of given the hour, if you just want to do a raising of the hands for if you've had contact with the applicant or a site visit, looks unanimous. Great, thank you. So we'll move on to the staff presentation. Advanced Planning Manager Mark Alkire and Zoning Administrator Stephanie Williams will join us for this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's see. Martin Alkar Community Development, joined by Artis Sharastava, Community Development Director. This project is located in the North Bay Shore area, as shown on the map. The project was originally approved in twenty eighteen and was initiated by the Sobrato Organization. Here's the approved site plan from twenty eighteen. And this project included several key elements. As you can see, there was a south phase of the project and a north phase of the project. There is, there was approved a new two hundred thirty thousand square foot office building to go along with the existing office building at the site. And notably, integral way was proposed to be extended all the way to Space Park Way. Additionally, the upper right-hand corner of the screen, a one point four acre parcel was dedicated, or will be dedicated to the city for use as BMR housing. And that was also part of the project. One of the key conditions from this original approval was condition one ninety from our Public Works Department. Basically, the original condition said that the office building could not be occupied until the city completed the new one-on-one off-ramp project and the Plymouth Street realignment. The applicant requested relief from this condition due to the delays that it would potentially cause. And again, this was brought back to council in fall of twenty nineteen, I believe. And the condition was amended per the language on the screen. And that's also in the staff report, basically saying if occupancy of the office occurs before the off-ramp realignment and the trip cap for North Bay Shore is exceeded after two consecutive monitoring events, then phase one of the residential part of the project must be complete and phase two of the residential part must also have been initiated construction. And then the applicant shall fund a congestion pricing study of up to a million dollars or make an equivalent contribution to the city for transportation improvements. So after that was brought forward, the project was delayed due to negotiations between the property owners for the project, notably the Sobrato Organization and two parcels owned by Google, shown on the screen. These two parcels are in the north phase of the project. So the current proposal is to move forward with phase one of the project, which includes mostly the development on the south parcel, which would include the new office building, as I mentioned earlier, and two hundred and twenty new units that surround a new parking structure on the south. Notably, the project is not, or this proposal does not include the two Google parcels shown in red there. There is no change to, to what was approved previously in twenty eighteen in terms of the phase two, the number of units and the design of the project. It's just that additional time is needed for further, I would say, negotiations between Sobrato and Google as they plan the future needs of both in the North Bay Shore. It still retains some key project elements, notably the first residential construction in North Bay Shore in quite some time. And that's what is before you today. I would also add that staff, in the staff report and as a condition of approval, because of the uncertainty over phase two, staff has proposed and the developer has agreed to a deed restriction on the Sobrato parcels owned in phase two. Again, that would restrict the future use of those parcels to multifamily residential, which was consistent with the original approval. Again, this does not include the two Google parcels because they are not under Sobrato's control at this, at this time. And then also, the condition one ninety is proposed to be modified again. As you can see, the language on the screen, the phase two condition of that sentence has been removed. And the last part of that condition, strikeout and additional language, was provided by staff just to provide a more concrete amount of funding, specifically one million dollars towards either congestion pricing or another priority transportation project in North Bay Shore. And as I mentioned, the key elements are still retained. The new residential, the integral way extension, the BMR parcel dedication notably, those are still retained in this current proposal per the original twenty eighteen approval. So that concludes staff's presentation with the recommendation on the screen. And of course, staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So at this time, I just wanted to ask if there's a presentation by the applicant. Believe, here we go. Their hand is raised. Bring Mr. Steele over.
Good evening, Mayor Kamai and City Council Members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
I want you to know I got dressed up for you tonight for my Zoom call. I do have shorts on, just so you know. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. My name is Tim Steele. I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate for the Sobrato Organization. And first, I wanted to acknowledge that COVID, as we know, has affected everybody in some way. And I would like to give kudos to city staff. Early on, and actually a year ago in April, I presented them with my COVID challenge shortly after COVID hit, when certainly they were challenged personally and professionally as I was. And with all of these challenges in front of all of us, they addressed and assisted me in a professional, respectful way, which I greatly appreciate. And kudos to public work staff and the planning staff that participated in this discussion. Second, for various reasons and history of the project, I know some of you don't want to see me ever again, but I'm back. I'm sorry. But, and somewhat a complicated, Martin Alkar somehow simplified and boiled things down in a very succinct staff report. And I want to give him kudos for, for helping and putting that together for us tonight. The primary reason why we have to, had to talk about this is because of Google's change of their corporate policy related to COVID and not doing any third-party transactions until they go back to work and see how things are going back to normal. And one of the primary conditions in our map was we needed to have one final map, merging all of the parcels, both on the north and south phase. So staff worked with us and I am concurring with their recommendations. I'm not making any other presentation. I am prepared to answer any questions and I really do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So since it's a public hearing, we're actually going to go to public comment first and then we'll bring it back to, for council questions. So do any members of the public would like to provide any public comment? Please feel free to raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine on your phone. And we'll get the timer up for two minutes, Ms. Von der Linden. Great, thank you. And Tim McCutzy.
Hi, y'all. I know sometimes I can be a broken record, but here, one of the classics that I come out with. Anytime Google has a development in front of the city, I would love to see the Alphabet Workers Union involved in the discussions. It sounds like this has been ongoing for a long time, but I'd love to see AWO in future discussions as things come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander Brown.
Wow, this, this project's been going on for a while, huh? Yeah, Tim and the Sobrato Organization have been great with the San Diego Neighborhood Association. We are neighbors of the project and I am looking forward to having neighbors. I think that getting this started is exciting and has taken long enough. I'm ready to have something there to get rid of the parking lot, put in some people, put in some greenways. I like the nice wide space that I can walk and bike down right outside the park. Looking forward to a gate that lets me get out onto Pear, you know, to go out to all the businesses that aren't there across the street because Southwest hasn't done anything there yet. I just want to speak in support of this project. I am looking forward to it and I think that phase one is a great start. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, we can bring it back to council. That concludes public comment. Do council members have questions for staff or the applicant? Do council members have questions for staff or the applicant? Councilmember Madachek.
Thank you. So I want to circle back on a question that I sent in that I've also discussed with the applicant. And that is the question surrounding, is there anything that requires the residential in Phase 1 to be built? So I read a certain paragraph in the staff report many, many times. And it's the paragraph at the bottom of page four. And it says, "If occupancy of the office building occurs prior to completion of the off-ramp realignment and the trip cap is exceeded after two consecutive monitoring events, then Phase 1 of the residential component must be completed." So I was wondering, well, what happens if the trip cap isn't exceeded? Does that mean you don't have to do the residential? So, as I understand it, the residential and the parking structure are closely tied together in terms of how it's designed and built. And you need the parking structure for the office building. But I guess I would just like to revisit this one more time to make sure that the way the condition is written, the residential will get built.
Councilmember, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, the three of us talked about this along with Sandy from the City Attorney's Office. And you're right, there's nothing that specifically ties the construction or the occupancy of the office building with the residential, but it's inherent in the design. And there are certain requirements built into condition 190, but only if those two conditions get tripped. So we wanted to get a sense of what your interest might be in terms of connecting the office to the residential. And I, staff reached out to Tim Steele, and he did suggest a condition, which I'm happy to share with you. If I may share my screen. Can you see the screen? It basically says that a certificate of occupancy for the new office building, I'm sorry, I have to move this, shall not be granted until after the building permit for the Phase 1 residential building has been issued and construction commenced. And this is an option that the applicant was open to discussing. You know, the city can go further and require a certain percentage of the units to be completed. But I have to say, this is something that council may want to hear from the applicant, and we don't understand all the implications of requiring a certain percentage because there are certain systems that need to be finished in order for units to start getting occupancy. So there is another option that we wanted to share with you, and that is, sorry, let me. A certificate of occupancy shall not be granted until after issuance of certificates of occupancy for at least, and we picked a 25% number of the units in Phase 1. In either case of the council, it wants to move forward with this, we would recommend removing the requirement for Phase 1 in the Public Works condition because we would already have a condition. And if they're in conflict, we always find in the real world when we're trying to implement things, there's invariably a conflict. And so our recommendation would be, if the council wants to pick either one or two, and maybe the applicant wants to speak to that, we would want to remove the connection of condition 190 to Phase 1 of the residential project. So I will stop sharing my screen so the council can discuss and let us know how they want to proceed.
I guess a question I have is, if construction has commenced, is there a possibility that construction stops?
Construction can always stop. But, and I would say in my career, I've seen few examples of this, especially in the Bay Area. I've seen this in, I used to live on the East Coast, where, you know, you had a long period of economic downturn and it took a long time to build something. And once in my stint in Cupertino, but the applicant did end up building the project. It just took them longer. So I just have to say, our experience in the Bay Area has been, applicants do want to move forward on it primarily because of, you know, the economic advantage. And as you noted, they can't get office occupancy until the garage is built. And the garage shares a foundation with the residential building. They're integrated. The residential wraps around the garage. So it would be pretty hard to get occupancy of it without finishing the rest of it. That's our feeling. I did talk this through even with our chief building official.
Okay, so I'm inclined to suggest we go with option 1, but I'd also be interested in hearing from my colleagues if they see any issues with that. Kind of like I saw an issue with the first one. It's like, anybody see any issues if I propose option 1? And I guess if the applicant could comment on that, too. I think you said that they agreed with that?
Yes, the applicant agreed with option 1.
Okay.
But I, maybe you can speak after the council has a chance to speak.
Okay. Councilmember Robbie Koga, did you want to ask your questions? Or did you want to hear from the applicant about option 1 first?
I was gonna comment on Councilmember Madachek.
Okay, perfect. Okay, no, go ahead. I just wanted to ask. Go ahead.
So I, you know, I'm inclined to want more certainty. So I was looking at option 2, but I also was thinking 25% of the 220 is like 50 or so units. And if that ended up being the only thing that was built, it would just be an incomplete project. So I think I'm okay with option 1. And if it's integrated with the garage that much, then, you know, my hope is that it would all be built. But I actually had some concerns if only 50 of the 220 units would ended up being built. So I think that would actually make it even a more challenging situation. So I'm fine with option 1.
Okay. Do other council members have any questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Schalter.
I would like to hear from Tim Steele about this.
Great, thank you. Timmy, you there?
Yes, thank you for inviting me back. I did talk with Martin today at length. I can appreciate the question. So the language in the first option is something, it's a very complicated synchronizing of the garage, the parking, temporary parking, and the residential. But I see that being doable, and we'd be comfortable with it. I did want to point out that, once we pull the first building permit, not counting building permit fees, but special impact fees, community fees, including school fees, park fees, North Bay Shore transportation fees, just along for pulling that is 20, almost $23 million, plus the 1.4 acres of land in a go extension. We need those apartments occupied and paying rent to help pay for all of the costs of this project. So it would be disastrous for us to start only build 50 and not complete all 220. Also, the project, the residential component of the project is not typical in that it wraps a garage and it hides the garage. And you can't really stop that and continue to hide the garage. You're kind of committed that you've got to do it all at once, meaning the garage and the residential, because it really works and operates as one, even though you have two separate building permits. So I'm comfortable with the first one. I think it does a good job of assuring above and beyond the economics of pulling those permits. It assures that we will synchronize this in a way that the residential is completed and the office building then can be occupied. So thank you for consideration.
Okay, Councilmember Schalter, go ahead.
Yeah, well, if the applicant is happy, you know, is acceptable of option 1, then I certainly can support it. I've been watching this project for, I think it's five years, something like that. And it really has started, it started off, I thought, as a sound project. And through a couple of iterations, I think it's gotten better. But I've really been impressed by the persistence of both the applicant and our planning staff to work through the, just the myriad of issues that have arisen over time to produce a really, you know, a really high-quality office residential project. And I'm really, I'm so excited at the aspect of seeing this first residential project in the North Bay Shore. So I'm strongly in favor of it. Is it time for a motion?
Anytime is good for a motion. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I move the staff recommendation with the incorporation of option 1.
For this, Councilmember Schalter, we would need you to read the two resolutions. And then at the end, with the addition of the additional condition of approval, option 1 is described by the Community Development Director and the corresponding Public Works Condition modifications. You don't have to say that. You can just incorporate the revised conditions as described.
I move that we adopt the staff recommendation. Number one, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving modifications to a previously approved planned community permit, development review permit, and heritage tree removal permit for a mixed-use development consisting of a 231,210 square-foot office building and 635 new multifamily residential units, retaining an existing 156,317 square-foot office building and demolishing an existing 103,513 square-foot industrial building, and the removal of 84 heritage trees on a 16.2-acre site bounded by La Avenida, Inigo Way, Space Parkway, and Santiago Villa Mobile Home Park, 1255 Pear Avenue. To be read in title only, further reading waived, attachment 1 to the council report. Two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving modifications to a previously approved tentative map at 1255 Pear Avenue, to be read in title only, further reading waived, attachment to the council report. And three, the addition of option 1 as described earlier by the city attorney.
Okay. Looks like you got everything. Is there a second to the motion? Councilmember Hicks. All right, you're muted, but I hear you saying sure. So we have a motion by Councilmember Schalter and a second by Councilmember Hicks. Is there any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing no hands, Ms. Fonderlanden, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Abi Koga.
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks. Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Madachek.
Yes.
Councilmember Schalter.
Aye.
Aye, Mayor Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Knae.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to staff and our applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this concludes our public hearing, and we can move on to item 7, which are council, staff, and committee reports. Does anyone have anything to share? Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'd like to ask that we consider a resolution in support of Senate Bill 90 and Assembly Bill 1416, which together comprise the Ballot Disclose Act. This is legislation that's sponsored by the California Clean Money Campaign. And what it would do would be to add a brief mention to the ballot language itself of the principal proponents and opponents of ballot measures. This is very congruent with our legislative program that's going to be coming back on the 27th. And I know that it can be achieved with less than one hour of staff time. So I'd like to ask that we consider a position of support on these two pieces of legislation.
Okay. Just turning to the city manager, is this the time to take recommendations? Or do we do that at item 8? I got confused.
So I think just with the way that, yes, this is the time. So item 8 is now item 7, just in the agenda this evening. So I think, yeah, you're on track. So just in regards to taking action, so yes, if council is interested in asking staff to look further at those two measures, which are related to ballot disclosure, which would educate voters about who funds the statewide propositions, without looking at it further, could likely be aligned with the work plan item related to campaign finance reform, along with your commitment to just general good governance and transparency. So this is something that staff can look into. And I know that we already have a number of legislative bills as part of our plan. So that is something that we can track and add if council is interested this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm seeing thumbs up. So I'm assuming we're doing a straw motion. So if we could just actually do like hands, and then I can visually see those who are interested, all right. It looks unanimous. So it'll come back. Thank you, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Michelle Walter? I'm sorry, Madachek?
Thanks. I also have an item that I was going to ask council for support on, and that is to refer to the CPPC that we take a look at revising policy K5, which is the one we talked about a little bit earlier today, or tonight, regarding the 1% public art construction, 1% for public art of construction projects. And since we have been for several years now and saying, hey, staff, can you also bring back a 2% option? Maybe we could just make it a policy so we didn't have to always bring that up. So I would propose we refer this to the CPPC to look at modifying the policy.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All right, and it looks unanimous.
And then a couple of things. Just want to report on my participation in the Santa Clara County Airport Land Use Commission meeting. And we are looking at doing some changes, like we do every year, to the comprehensive land use plans for the different airports. And one of the things we're particularly looking at is, do we do something different regarding noise given the concern in our community about airplane noise? Also, I attended the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority meeting. It was mostly just about the budget. And I watched the most recent Montaloma Working Group meeting regarding fencing around the school. And like last time, it was interesting. And I would like to follow up on the comment from Mr. James about the trees on Middlefield. Um, to find out a little bit more about, can this be a later phase that the trees, um, we, we look at, do we really need to remove the trees? Um, as opposed to assuming that we are going to remove the trees? And is that something staff could, um, send us some information on? Or I don't know if, um, they're still here to provide more comment, but I also would like to save the trees if we could.
I'll turn to the, the city manager on that one.
Um, thank you, mayor. Our public works director, Dawn Cameron, is here. So she'll be able to speak to that item.
Uh, thank you. I think I heard most of the question. I was transitioning up to the panel during some of it. Um, staff did previously, uh, when Henry provided a response to Mr. Jean's original correspondence in CC City Council about the, um, the reasons why that second left turn lane is being added. It is actually an EIR mitigation measure for North Bay Shore precise plan. So there are some legal requirements around it. But also the traffic volumes for that approach and the impact of having the left lane overfill and back up and start blocking through traffic was quite severe pre-COVID and traffic conditions are already starting to come back to, uh, pre-COVID levels. And we're already starting to see it. If we were to try to stop the project now that's currently under construction and say, don't add that second left turn lane, um, one, we would definitely may find ourselves having to come back to do it later, which is going to be far more expensive. We are going to make every attempt to save the trees. We don't know if the trees need to come down. And unfortunately, we won't know until we start excavating around the roots. And that's when the city arborist goes in and looks at it and say, okay, yes, you can make this work and, and the tree should be okay. Or this particular tree, unfortunately, you know, you're going to have to cut into the root so much that you may have to take the tree down. So we're going to make every attempt to save the trees. Uh, we have every reason to believe that the left, second left turn lane is still required because we're under extreme traffic condition, uh, congestion problems in that area.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, mayor. Very briefly, uh, I participated in the VTA PAC meeting last week as an alternate. Uh, and I think probably the items of greatest significance, uh, related to, uh, the uh, implementation of measure B, uh, which I think the board of directors will be looking at. And Councilmember Robbie Koga could probably explain better than I can, but just wanted to share my participation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, mayor. I, I kind of wanted to separate my dips on this item. So, um, so this is my second one. I, I, I just wanted to announce that um, I've been appointed, uh, by the ABAG Executive Committee to serve on the governing board of the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. And so I'm very much looking forward to the work there. And I know that I'll be working closely with Councilmember Schalter on the, the Bay issues. And, um, I wanted to note that there was, um, an article, uh, in the San Francisco Chronicle today about the multi-billion dollar risk that, uh, sea level rise, um, poses to, uh, to the Bay Area. And so I'm looking forward very much to digging into that work. And I, I've actually served on the advisory body for the past eight years. So it feels really good to move on to the governing board and, uh, help with the work there as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abicoga?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Reminded me about VTA. Um, yes, we did have a board meeting where we adopted, um, principles that will guide, um, the, the allocation of measure B funds. And, um, this Friday, we will actually be having a workshop at 10, starting at 10:30 uh, to begin the, um, discussion on the biannual budget for 2022 and 23. And that, um, measure B funds will be a part of that conversation. So anyone interested, please tune in. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
Just want to report that I, um, I attended our Cities Association Legislative Action Committee, um, meeting last Thursday where we heard about, um, Assembly Member Roman's, um, VTA bill, which I am sure our, um, Councilmember Robbie Koga, who sits on the main, um, Cities Association Board, um, can, can talk more about. All right. And that's, uh, oh, Councilmember Hicks?
Sorry, I'll, I'll report something short. I have not been going to the San Francisco, uh, Santa Cruz Air Roundtable meetings because they have been, um, hopefully temporarily postponed. But, um, council members know this, but for members of the public who may be concerned, um, a bunch, a number of city managers, including our own East Palo Alto, Los Altos, Menmark and Palo Alto, um, sent in a, a letter on, uh, to the, uh, the FAA regarding aircraft noise policy, um, and research efforts, um, on our shared perspectives regarding that.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to report? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So we can move on to item eight, which is our closed session report. Um, City Attorney Chopa is our report.
There's no closed session report tonight.
Great, thank you. Which means we can move on to item nine, which is our adjournment. Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us. I know we had an early start today. Our next regular city council meeting will be on April 27th, 2021. So until then, stay healthy. Our meeting is adjourned at 9:58 PM. Thank you. Good night.